Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Commission to order. The date is December 4th, 2024, and the time is 7:01. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so long to that. Roll call.
Caroline Renus.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Jim Heilmann.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Okay. All right. Now, we're gonna, consideration of the minutes. As we all recall, we didn't have a meeting in November, and we didn't have a meeting in October. Our workload was slight. So therefore, the minutes that we're approving was of the September 4th meeting. So is there any discussion regarding the minutes of September 4th? If not?
Chairman, if I may, I wasn't here in September at this meeting, the September 4th meeting. And so I do have some corrections to the minutes. I wasn't attending, but usually when the recording secretary prepares the minutes, she sends them to me within like five days, and I go through them. So there's just a few things that jumped out at me, if I may. I'm sure you'll all agree. Okay. Let's see. I would like, under D, on page one. Under D, continuation of public hearing. I'm suggesting, after it's mentioned, number one, item number one, and it lists 898 Church Street, I would like it to say, Chair Vitale continued the hearing from last month, asking for information on the sidewalk issue only. You said that, but it's not reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
And that's kind of important because...
Why, how do you know I said that? You watched the tape?
Oh, I did, I watched the whole meeting, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. On page two, oh gosh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Seven lines up from the bottom of page two. It says exasperates, and that was ex, it's supposed to be exacerbates. You know, exasperates means you get mad, you know? Exacerbates means you increase dramatically. So, so if we could do that, change on that. And it's the same mistake again on page four. And this time, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 up from the bottom. It was exasperates, and again, it should be exasperates.
Exacerbates.
Exacerbates, thank you, Kathy. Okay, on top of page three, third line down, it mentions Mr. Kohan. And that should, two things, it should be spelled with a K, K-O-H-A-N, not C. And I would suggest a comma, Mr. Kohan, comma, PZC member, because no one's gonna know who Mr., you know, there's no reference in here to Mr. Kohan. So I'd like, comma, PZC member. And then, I just have a few more here, if you can bear with me. On page 13. Gosh. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 up from the bottom, 10 lines up from the bottom. It says, the purpose extension of the linear trail. It's supposed to be the proposed extension of the linear trail. And I think there's one more, if you could just hold on a second. On the top of page 11. It's the motion. Ms. Phillips said it's about Woodhouse Avenue. And it's in-ground pool, comma, pool house, comma, fencing, and it should be drainage. The typo, it was draining installations, it should be drainage installations. And that concludes my remarks.
I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that concludes the corrections I'm suggesting be effective.
Comments, any comments regarding Erin's corrections? Debbie, you all right with it? We all set? Okay. Can I just see this moment? All right. Okay, the comments have been, and the suggestions have been corrected, or corrections have been made to the minutes. And just the fact that Erin's not here, but between watching the movie, watching the video of the meeting, and the fact the grammar, a lot of them is grammatical corrections rather than content corrections. Has anybody got any issues with it? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes from the regular meeting of September 4th, 2024, be approved with the corrections on page one. Chair Vitale says to continue the hearing from last month, and we'll just consider the sidewalk issue. On page two. To change the word from exasperate to exacerbate. On page three. Three lines down, Mr. Kohan, it should be spelled with a K, K-O-H-A-N, with a comma, and then a comma after PZC. On page four. Six lines up, another correction of exasperates, to correct with exacerbates. And then on page 11. Draining should be corrected with drainage. Page 13. Purpose should be corrected with proposed.
I don't want to hear that one, could you repeat that one?
Purpose should be corrected with proposed.
Oh, proposed. Thank you.
And that's it.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, before that, let's see, voting members tonight would be, who's, I think, Nick and I, Debbie, Mike and Jeff? Okay? Okay, calling for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Isn't there a second?
All right, yes, thank you. All right, please, the vote.
Nick, Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Going into old business. A193.7, 988 East Center Street Benchmark. Request for a bond release. Now, Erin's discovered a whole bunch of other things, but I don't know what we're gonna do about all those other things tonight. You're working on getting them resolved, correct?
I'm working on, excuse me, yes? What do you?
What?
I'm working with them to iron these different things out, yes.
Okay.
Although David Lord is here tonight, he was the wetland scientist.
And what are you gonna ask of him of this site?
Well, we don't have to do it here, I can ask him in a conference. They didn't, they chose not to do a conference with me, but I think that's the best venue. We can all sit around with a map, and it's kind of, it's a very small site, but there's a lot going on, and a lot happened over five years.
Okay, so there's, the request for bond is denied, I believe. There's no, they're not ready for a bond release.
Correct, so tabled, or...
That will go on to the next. Item 2, 824 8.32, Watacic Drive Fence Installation. Now, what did you request that, have they got the fence in?
They have the fence in for the upland part of it, because you had approved that administratively, as it says in the agenda, that was already done in September. And I put it in here so that, as a notification, so people know that was approved.
Nothing else has been done?
No, but they're looking for the approval to bring it across the wetland, and he agreed to keep it up, like eight, a foot up, like this. What I mean by wetland, it's an area about as long as this table.
Yeah, I mean, so what does that mean for the commission tonight?
That you, I'm suggesting, would you approve that? Yes, because it's, because it's a wetland, and you can't do administrative for a wetland.
So that's why it couldn't be done administratively. So we'll entertain a motion to allow them to continue the fence through the wetlands.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Deb?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A24-8.32, Watacic Drive, Joseph Watacic Fence Installation in the wetlands portion, he be allowed to continue the fence through the wetlands.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, going on to three. Item three, A24 8.3, no, since that's fence. A24 9.1, New Rock Hill Road, Wallingford Sewer Division, replacement of sewer pump station, which got granted as administration approval. They're not changing much of anything. Okay. A24 9.2, One Populane Estates at Wallingford Homeowners Association, tree removal, poison ivy treatment in Upland Review Area. That got granted also in September. Okay. A24 8.1, 20 Mohawk Drive, Jim Russo, request for a bond release.
Yes, I can go ahead, I checked it myself, everything's fine.
Okay. Entertain a motion for bond release?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that A24-8.1, 20 Mohawk Drive, Jim Russo, the bond be released.
Second.
Okay, seconded, call for a vote. Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. A24 9.3, Midwood, this has been withdrawn. So that moves that out of that agenda line. A24 10.2, 230 Benham Avenue, New Cheshire Road, driveway crossing.
Good evening. My name is Richard Reynolds, I'm the project manager or project engineer from the LRC Group. I just wanted to pass out a few blowups for you guys for clarity and easy reference as we go through the process here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, before you start, I don't know if you got a copy, the commission got a copy of the revised report from David Lord. Did you get that too? Okay, good.
Sorry, I forgot my easel, but... So my name is Richard Reynolds, project engineer with the LRC Group. Our office is located at 160... Good evening again. My name is Richard Reynolds, project engineer with the LRC Group. Our office is located at 160 West Street in Cromwell. Our office is the land surveyor and civil engineer for the project. Here with me tonight is David Lord. He's the certified soil scientist and environmental consultant for the project to answer any questions regarding the inland wetlands delineation. We are here tonight representing the owners, Susan Godek and Patricia Godek, requesting a permit for approval to construct a driveway crossing off of Cheshire Road. The project is part of a lotline modification between 231 New Cheshire Road and the adjacent property, 230 Benham Road, owned by Patricia and Susan Godek. The inland wetlands shown on the plan, in this color plan here, they are the lighter shade of green. They were delineated on May 7th and August 29th this year, and feel located by our office on May 15th and August 30th of this year. Wetlands delineation report was provided to you guys for your review. Generally, the property slopes from west to east, towards the area of inland wetlands on the eastern and southern portions of the property. So the light green is the wetland area. Down here, on the southern portion, there's a wetland area also. There's a seasonal water body that collects stormwater runoff from the property and from New Cheshire Road, and from some existing catch basins in New Cheshire Road that discharged into the property. On the northern side of the property, there is a 15-inch RCP pipe that allows water to leave the property on the northern property line. So you can see here, this is a proposed driveway for one house with a septic system, a well, and a driveway. The way the grading, the existing grades work is that the land slopes away from New Cheshire Road, and this comes down to New Cheshire Road, and it all comes down to generally a low spot in the, in the property. Proposed site improvements for the driveway include a driveway, a bituminous concrete driveway, some site grading, as you can see, and then a drainage pipe installation. This end is a little bit higher than this end. Naturally, the water flows in this direction, and then out the existing drainage pipe on the north. Based upon the driveway requirements of the town, what we're proposing is to have the driveway slope down to a low point, and then slope back up to the house. By doing that, we needed to put a culvert in the driveway to allow the natural flow of water across the wetlands. This picture here is just a larger blowup of what I provided to you for your review. So as you can see, we have our driveway that comes off of New Cheshire Road. We're proposing 26 linear feet of 15-inch pipe with some riprap on the ends. The shaded, the gray shaded area is the proposed wetland disturbance for this activity. It equals 500 square feet. The construction of this drainage culvert will be, will go in and remove the topsoil stockpiled uphill from the wetland area. Install the drainage pipe per the town details for the cross-section for the drainage pipe, which includes clean gravels that will be imported onto the site. Once the pipe is installed and the stone riprap is put on the ends, imported subbase gravel will be brought in for the driveway, and then an asphalt surface will be added to the driveway. During construction, the topsoil will be stockpiled outside the upland review area. That material will be reused for establishing the finished ground surface. Our construction details show erosion control measures, which include silt fence and a construction entrance on the front of the project. Also, our construction details show erosion control blanket. It requires the installation of a road control blanket on slopes three-on-one or steeper. As I mentioned before, the wetland disturbance was 500 square feet, as shown in this shaded area here. Upland review disturbance was 5,705 square feet. I just wanted to make note that we received no review comments from town departments other than the environmental planner. And if any comments come down the road, we'll definitely address them. If you have any questions, be happy to answer it.
All right. Commissioners? Nick?
Erin, do we need to notify Cheshire because of the water runs to their reservoirs?
Yes, on two, yes, on two counts. We notified Cheshire because they're within 500 feet of the Cheshire, Meriden line, both. But we also notified Cheshire, and you might want to speak to this, Rich, but because of the Cheshire watershed, which is in Wallingford but drains to Cheshire.
That's what I just said.
Yes, but there was two different reasons to contact, let's see, Meriden. The Meriden city clerk got a copy, and it was, I did that, that's my job. But the applicant's job is to notify about the watersheds or aquifers, and Rich did that.
So do we have any correspondence back to them?
Good question.
I do, I do not, no.
We wouldn't anticipate any correspondence unless they had an issue.
They don't usually tell you that they're okay with the idea of what's going down? I mean, we're gonna have a lot of disturbance out there. You're not worried about mucky water or any type of, you know, if they're gonna go stockpile the topsoil on the property line, which is probably the backside of the slope that goes down into the reservoir. So I'm just asking, we don't get any kind of receipt or anything saying that they acknowledge and they're okay with it?
It's a good question. Can you shed any light on this? Can you just go over which way the water drains, the different ways? Because it's different watersheds, right? There's different way it breaks?
So this is our site development plan. The town line is right about here, which is the Meriden-Wallingford town line. And the water, existing flow path goes to the wetland area, and then it would head towards the north, which would be Meriden.
So did I, did I misspeak? Is it the Meriden watershed or the Cheshire watershed that...
It's the Meriden one? It's the Meriden.
Okay, so when you have the form, which is in the file here, you send it to the Connecticut Department of Public Health, as you're required to?
Yes.
And so which watershed did...
It was the Meriden one.
Okay, so I did misspeak about five minutes ago when I said Cheshire, it's Meriden.
It is Meriden.
So there is no runoff going to the Cheshire reservoir?
It goes to the Meriden, Meriden aquifer area, or their watershed.
And that aquifer, if I could just add, is on the zoning map. It's, it's drawn on the town zone map, and it also has regulations that are housed in the zoning regulations for watershed protection. Because it's not just the Wallingford watershed we protect. We protect all the public drinking water supply watersheds or aquifer areas, you know? They have certain restrictions or extra regulations.
Okay.
Where's, where's Benham Road in relationship to this?
I can take the, let me see if I have the full map. So we're down in here, and Benham Road is over here. So we're down in here and Benham Road is over here.
So, and this water is running towards the airport?
Most of this water runs in this direction.
Right, and then where does, when it leaves the site, is that, heads to the airport?
It heads north.
Heads north.
Yeah, it heads, yeah, that way. And I think there's actually a, the street down here, I think there's a catch basin with an open back that this water gets to.
I'm a tad confused and I'm embarrassed to say so, but the reservoirs that are in the neighborhood, they're in Cheshire, but they're Meriden reservoirs, correct?
It's their aquifer.
Not their aquifer, the actual standing water, the reservoirs that goes, that 68 goes between and Highland Avenue. This water ends up there or ends up down towards the airport in the aquifer?
Honestly, I don't know where it goes once it leaves the property.
Well, any other question? Debbie, you got questions?
No question.
No questions.
No questions.
Jimmy?
Just one question. The, I guess it's the southwest entry of where you have water entering your pipe that go under the road. Most of the time that's dry, is that correct?
It is. Most of the time it's dry.
So that's only for heavier rains?
That's correct.
That would convey water?
That's correct.
And in the springtime, it has a tendency to fill the pond on the other side?
So what, the, about the pond itself, the existing water body, is that you could go out there now and there's not any water in it, but when we went out and surveyed it, there was water in it. So it's kind of a seasonal type water body and...
I noticed also there's no elevation change across that to speak of.
Right, it's pretty flat for sure.
Yeah, very flat, and it's probably just a perched water table seasonally.
So we did, we did some soil testing up here. We didn't encounter any water, anything, but the material was slow draining for sure. So what we lead to believe is that it would be a perched water table. Water just cannot.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Rich, if I may. Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of Rich? Okay, well, two questions, actually. Well, first is David Lord, who's here tonight, is he going to present his report?
When we're finished?
Oh, okay. So my question for you as the engineer is, and I sent, you know, we've been talking. I sent you the photograph of the low point of the site, which is the driveway crossing. And let me back up, Commissioner, as per my environmental planner's report. You're just asked to approve the driveway crossing. You're not getting involved in how the driveway goes up the hill to the house site because that's out of the wetland jurisdictional area. It's just the driveway crossing, the approach to it, the low point and up. Just, it's a very small area that you're asked to approve. Not the lot split and the different configurations of the...
I don't think we have a problem with that.
Okay.
Carolyn, you got any comments?
I just have one clarifying question, please. Can you just repeat the number of square feet that you said was affected in the upland?
5,705.
Okay, thank you.
It is also, not to interrupt, but it's on our detail sheet. There's a wetland information section and it references the wetland and the upland area disturbance.
Okay. Is there any other questions, commissioners? This is basic driveway crossing, whether...
If I may ask one question of Rich. So I sent you a photograph. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. The commission has always allowed driveway crossings. I mean, you get to somebody's own property on both sides of a wetland, they should be entitled to get there so long as it's done correctly and... Okay, Aaron, go ahead.
As you know, I sent you a photograph of the low point where I was at there Monday and it was full of ice over water at the very lowest point, which I think David will speak to, the kind of wetland, why it's so wet. But my question to you as an engineer is, there's no, I'm just confused why, you know, that area floods sometimes. I mean, it's wet sometimes, often. So doesn't, don't you have to do something special so the asphalt doesn't crack over time?
So we could add, once the construction of the driveway happens, the contract will contact us, will go out in the field if there's any issues and potentially we could put a fabric down or a deeper depth of subbase gravel to make it more stable and more durable and more long-lasting.
Why is that a wetland issue? If the driveway cracks, roads crack, everything cracks.
It's, I don't know, it's just wet often, so it seems like it's going to happen real quick. I don't know.
Also...
They're building the road. We're allowing them to cross the wetlands. If they got a faulty road, that's between the owner of the house and the contractor.
Just as a side note too, is that a plot plan and a septic system design plan will be required for this property and it'll be reviewed by the town engineer and all the staff. So at that time, if there's any other...
Please, it's not a wetland issue. If I can't get through tonight, if I don't deal with wetland issues. Okay, commissioners, any other issues? Any other comments? I'll enter a motion to approve or deny this. Well, first, significant activity, approve. A motion made regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 24-10.2, 230 Benham Avenue and 231 New Cheshire Road, Susan Goddick driveway crossing, be declared not a significant impact activity.
Okay, hang on a minute. You should be okay. Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? I don't know if it's needed.
There was a revised, some revised information that came in this afternoon that I handed out that affects the application.
What do you mean, we're going to deny the application because of the additional information?
No, the soil type was left out, so...
What was left out?
The type of soil at the crossing. So it's provided now.
And what does that mean? Does commissioners want to know the type of soil at the crossing?
The type, I'll just say, is aquint. It was the farmer back in the day, you know, altered the wetlands, so it's what they call aquint.
Now that you found out what the soil is, are you recommending this to be approved or denied?
Yes, absolutely approved.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. Jeff? Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
That was, do you need a further motion?
What's that? Okay, for significant activity. So now I'll entertain a motion regarding approval or denial of the application.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 24-10.2, 230 Benham Avenue and 231 New Cheshire Road, Susan Goddick driveway crossing, be approved with the conditions of approval in the environmental planner's report of November 27, 2024, numbers 1, 2, and 3.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Application 924, excuse me, A 24 10.3. This is 1,000, 1020, 1030, 1044, 1080 Barnes Road, Midwood Management. David, will you pull that stencil out to easel out a little bit? I don't know if that's necessary. I think the cameras, they focus, but there, that's better for, I think, for the commission.
Good evening. For the record, James Perito, I'm an attorney with Halloran Sage at 265 Church Street in New Haven. I'm here representing the owner of 1,000, 1,020, 1,030, 1,044, and 1,080 Barnes Road, Midwood Management Corp. for this inland wetlands application. With me tonight is one of the owner's representatives, Kevin Cornell, who is right behind me.
Pardon me. Could I have your name again, please?
Perito, P-E-R-I-T-O.
Yes.
James.
James. Are you an attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Of where?
Halloran and Sage.
Yeah.
In New Haven.
Thank you.
Welcome. Our engineering group is OCC Design Consortium, Dave Carson and George Cotter. And our environmental and wetlands expert is George Logan from Rema, who is, I think, right behind me, over here. I'm going to give a brief overview and then turn it over to Dave, George, and George to talk to you about the application. At the onset, I think it's important to point out that this site is 47.7 acres total. It's a collection of parcels. The total wetland area is 10.064 acres. And the area of the wetland to be altered is 0.087 acres, which is 3,778 square feet, most of which is to upgrade the existing farm crossings that were there historically and are still there. So it's extremely minimal area that, on this entire site, that we're dealing with. The overall proposed plan is to develop three industrial warehouse storage buildings. The design has been done in three distinct phases so as to minimize the disturbance and ensure that the sedimentation erosion control measures will be effective for each one of the phases. Each phase can stand alone in terms of its development as well as the stormwater controls. As noted by Mr. Logan in his report, there is no anticipated impact on the wetlands or watercourses. We believe that this project does not present significant activity and rise to that level. But at this point, I'd like to have Dave Carson talk about some of the specifics
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is David Carson, one of the principals of the OCC Group with offices in Cheshire. Hope you'll bear with me this morning. This is my first time making a presentation where I needed glasses. The application before you this evening is the proposed development of approximately 48 acres of land fronting on Old Barnes Road, North Rip Road. Adjacent to the west is...
David, you got to use the microphone better.
Old Barnes Reservoir. And to the north is Thomas Walls Farm. As our attorney said, the site contains approximately 10 acres of regulated wetland, which is shown on this existing conditions map shaded in a light green. Approximately eight acres of the wetlands is made up of this transaction through the center of the site. The development itself calls for the development of three warehouse buildings. Building one fronting on North Rip Road. Building two fronting on Old Barnes Road. And building three in the northwest corner. The development of these three building sites encompasses approximately 18 acres of the site, leaving, resulting in 30 acres of open space once the project is developed. Of the 30 acres of proposed open space, 21 acres of those 30 acres will remain in their natural state, undisturbed. Included in the 21 acres is basically all of the regulated wetlands and virtually all of the 50-foot buffer to those regulated wetlands. The only minor activities within the buffer are the two old farm road crossings here and here. As I said, each site will be developed independently. Each site is approximately eight acres in total, but the actual site development area around these buildings is four acres of actual site improvements around each of the buildings. WP1, all of these plans are included in the set of plans that were submitted. Each of the regulated activities with regard to wetland disturbance and buffer disturbance are highlighted on this plan. The wetland disturbance is shaded in red. As you can see, there's a little bit here and here. The buffer disturbance is shaded in green. In this area where the old farm road comes across here, the distance between the wetlands to the north and the wetlands to the south is not quite wide enough to actually carry a driveway through there. So there will be minor filling of the wetland at the toe of the slope, which would be riprap on both sides of the driveway. Down in this area, the existing culvert that's there needs to be extended by eight feet, so there is some minor disturbance here. Once again, here, there's, the green shows the area of grading for this crossing, area of grading for that crossing. In the set of plans are separate sheets for each phase of the development, both showing the development, showing the erosion control for each phase. To just walk you through more specifically the activities. Building one, approximately half of the development area actually drains away from the wetlands to both the east and the south. The only regulated activity with regard to building one is some minor buffer area grading shown in the shaded in green right there. With regard to building two, building two occupies an area that was previously approved for development by Midwood several years ago. And this is a copy of that approved plan. It actually was permitted by this commission, permitted by DEP and the Army Corps, and construction commenced. The site was totally cleared to the edge of the wetlands and the stormwater quality structures were installed, which include a level spreader, a 4,000-gallon oil separator here, a detention basin here, a 3,000-gallon oil-water separator there, and the cross culvert under the old farm road. The red line that's shown on here is to show you how extensive that previous plan was. It was, the proposed work went right to the edge of the wetlands everywhere and obviously in this area and that area actually encroached in the wetlands. Our new plan is shown here. As you can see, the wetlands is here, the light shaded is the buffer. It's totally outside the buffer. There's approximately 1.2 acres of less disturbance on this plan than there was on the previous proposal. Of course, the construction was never, was never finished of this driveway right here, hence coming in there and at this time asking to do a, I think it's like 57 square feet of disturbance in the wetlands here. And obviously, the buffer area disturbance that's shown there, which is basically just grading the proposed roadway. So in this particular case, the actual regulated activities are the wetland and buffer disturbance, as I just mentioned. Connection two... as I just mentioned, connection to the existing water quality structures which are already in place, but all the rest of the work is actually outside the wetland buffer limits. With regard to building three, the wetland activities principally are being able to construct this driveway with thirty-five hundred and thirty-one square feet of wetland filling and ninety-four hundred square feet of regrading within the buffer. It's a little hard to see on this plan, but the wetland line actually is here. There's a ditched intermittent water course here, so the wetlands are on either side of this old farm road. But as I mentioned, the graded area for the farm road is not quite wide enough to support a regular road. This was actually part of the original master plan developed for Midwood. As I said, Midwood owned all of this property. They initially developed a building on the other side of the road. They developed this and still own this, and the previous plan that was approved there but never constructed. When this plan was submitted and approved, we knew that this access drive was going to go here, and so the utility connections and the ability, the design of this whole plan was predicated on the driveway crossing there. A wetlands permit for that was not granted at that time, nor was it sought at that time, but it was part of the planning specifically with the Water and Sewer Department because I know that not necessarily in your purview, but is very important to them that we have a looped utility system all the way around. So we actually have a twelve-inch water main that ends here, and eventually will be looped back in. So, kind of in summation, I believe you can see that we have done a very diligent effort, at least in our opinion, of maintaining the integrity of the wetlands, the integrity of the buffer area throughout the site, with the only disturbance being disturbance that's necessary to complete those driveway crossings. And we furthermore believe that based on the fact that we've designed this entire plan in three self-sufficient phases, totally constructed, erosion control, stormwater control, everything, any one of these buildings could be simply built by itself and the rest of the site not developed, and the plans as submitted address that particular way of developing the site. Based on that, we think the amount of the minimal activities that we're asking for in each phase of the development certainly will have no significant impact as defined by your regulations. At this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to my partner, Mr. Cotter, and he will discuss our stormwater management system in more detail.
Mr. Chairman, I'm George Cotter from the OCC Group. If I may, I'll go up to the board. This is the property in its existing condition with Route sixty-eight on the bottom, Northrop Road running along the right side of the page. It's broken down into eight subcatchments for drainage purposes. Drainage Area A is our only portion of our property that flows toward Northrop Road and into the watershed. The rest of the property flows internally or down Route sixty-eight, Old Barnes Road, towards the reservoir. Area A is about an acre and a half. Area B is along Northrop Road, flows down to a catch basin structure on our property which drains into the Route sixty-eight and Old Barnes Road drainage system, which eventually gets down to North Farms Reservoir. Area C is a portion that flows to Old Barnes Road. Area D, again, flows to Old Barnes Road. Areas E and F flow internally to the wetland corridor that runs from Walls Farm Pond down through our property to the reservoir. Area G is this portion that will flow downhill towards either the wetland and the stream course that goes to the reservoir or directly to the reservoir. And in that area is the improved drainage system that was approved in the previous plan for the development of this portion of the property along Old Barnes Road. Area H is the area of the rear portion of the property that flows down the side slope to the reservoir. The high points on the property are ridge line that runs here, to the east, it goes to the wetlands, to the west, to the reservoir, and over here along Northrop Road, we've got a ridge line that divides the area that goes towards Northrop Road, but eventually most of this water gets down to the state drainage system down at the corner of North Up and Route sixty-eight, and this portion will flow back to the wetlands. So that's the layout of the property for the drainage areas as they exist. What we have done in this plan, Barnes Road is now oriented here, Northrop Road is along this way. What we've done, we have five underground galley detention systems, one in the front of building one, one to the rear of building one, one in front of building two, one to the rear of building two, and one to the south side of building three. We have two surface detention ponds, stormwater management areas. One located here at the intersection of Old Barnes and Northrop will take stormwater from the roof and a small portion of the access road. That will go through this pond into the state drainage system. And we're able to reduce the peak flow from this building through that pond back to Route sixty-eight. The other pond area in section three will be for the roof area, which will drain through this pond out to a level spreader and out to the North Farms Reservoir. This galley system will take half the building and the front parking lot, and it'll drain into the previously approved stormwater management basin and then down to the reservoir. The rear portion, half the building and the parking area will go back into, that galley system will go into the existing oil-water separator, level spreader, and go down to the reservoir. So what we have done is tried to mimic all the watersheds in the precondition, providing water quality recharge to the groundwater, and also controlling the overall runoff from the improvements for this project. If you've got any questions this time, I'd be glad to answer.
Of course, with these elaborate systems you have, you must have quite a maintenance program.
We do.
Jimmy used to be, he's familiar with that area up there, so why don't you go first, Jim?
Be kind, Jim.
I'm pleased to see this plan versus the old one. The old one didn't look very friendly to the wetlands. This one is much better. Really, the only concern I have here is the, I don't see any problems with it, but I would like to know information as an example, how much material has to be leveled across the entire area to create the kind of drainage system you have, especially building three?
David, would you like to answer that?
Right, building three is the ridge, which basically has to be sliced off like about fifteen feet.
I gathered that, and that's why I want to know the numbers.
And then that material used to fill in here. There actually is excess material up in this area. If you look at the detailed erosion control plans for each phase, building two is in a fill, and part of phase two construction will be excavating some of the excess material in this area and using it for fill over here. That area would then be reseeded, there would be a sediment control basin in there, and then once you come into building three, it's basically cutting off the knob, and it's a balanced cut-and-fill situation.
Okay, so you're essentially taking that knoll off because you don't want the building as a precipice over the entire thing, but you are edging alongside a state park, which is Wallingford's North Farms Reservoir area. Is there any concern for what people that utilize that park view from that location looking back at your operation? Right now, it's a natural landscape. That's going to change rather dramatically, I would assume, with this operation, what is seen from the reservoir, looking back at your property?
Well, obviously, you would see the building, you would see the warehouse building, but and basically, this whole area here is elevated, so we have these slopes here which will all be vegetated. We called out a specific seed mix from the water quality manual, so it's a no-mow seed mix with Crown Vetch in it. That's what you would see. Realize, and I'm saying that's what you would see, but of course you're going to see it, but it's a little hard to see on that plan. Realize that since we're not disturbing, these existed wooded areas will remain.
Okay, that's important.
Yeah.
Because you do mention a fair amount of clearing in the area for that building.
Right. Basically, the light green that you see on here, that's the limit of all the grading. Past the light green is the kind of chartreuse, those are undisturbed field areas, and the dark green are undisturbed wooded areas.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Do I say Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Deb?
No questions.
George, your maintenance program, is it biannual, annual? What's the-
There's a-
All of the above.
Yes, all of the above. It's an extensive list of activities in the maintenance program with different timeframes for each activity to be maintained, observed, or cleaned. In the case of the, we've got oil grit separators, we've got hydrodynamic separator, we've got, those are, you know, everything is listed out as a timeframe, spring, fall, throughout the report, the maintenance report we put in.
And it's in our plans, so we can take a look at it?
It's what I handed out to you tonight. The document I handed out to you tonight is the-
Stormwater Management Plan.
This one, yeah. It's about eight pages, Dave?
Yeah, I think so.
And it goes through in detail what the activities and the sequence and the timeframes for everything. Table one in the back, we've got road runoff management, litter control, paved areas, catch basins, oil-water grit separators, hydrodynamic separator, detention recharge chambers, surface detention basins, riprap outlets, plunge pools, winter sanding, spill containment, and they tell you a list of when those activities are to be done, and there's a description for each activity throughout the eight pages.
Now, you're putting up your column warehouses, they're going to be available for rent, so you're going to have different renters in there?
That I do not have.
Obviously, they are going to be for lease. We anticipate that we're talking about a single user for each building. I mean, these are high bay warehouses. It's obviously designed, it could be, you know, two tenants in a building. I mean, we've laid out the parking in a way so that it runs the length of the building so that it's, if in fact there were tenants, but with the size of these buildings, there seems to be a market for these buildings, like in the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand range. We all know there's a zillion of the four-hundred-thousand-square-foot, and there's a lot of fifty-thousand-square-foot warehouses, but there are very few in the state that are high bay, you know, in the hundred to two-hundred-thousand-square-foot range.
That's my concern, is you're going to have strange tenants in there that you're not going to know what they're going to be dealing with, so-
If I may?
Go ahead.
The maintenance report, that would be filed on the land records, and as part, if you read through that, part of it is that there'd be an onsite person identified with a contact number who will be responsible for keeping the maintenance logs, doing the inspections. Now, whether that be a person hired by Midwood as the owner of the project, or whether that be the single large tenant in there who has that person, but that person will be identified and responsible for doing it, keeping the logs, submitting the information available to the town anytime they want, and these logs are weekly logs.
So there'll be somebody there to represent the whole area as far as if a truck came in and he had a bad radiator and it burst and went into the catch basin, you're talking about water oil separators, there's going to be somebody there onsite, or it's a weekly thing?
No, a spill containment like that would be immediate, and the person, the designated person onsite would either have the personnel to clean up a minor spill, and it's detailed as to how, or if it was a more significant spill, to immediately contact the Wallingford Fire Department and to contact DEP if we're talking about hazardous material immediately.
So if we were to approve this tonight, when the project was complete, who would get the paperwork to oversee and handle the maintenance on this project?
What it says in the thing is that that person would be identified prior to the issuance of a CO for the building. So obviously, tonight, tomorrow, a year from now, we don't know who the tenant is that's going to occupy building one, so we don't know who that person is, but that person would need to be identified- But that person would need to be identified prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for that building, and they would be responsible.
Okay.
Commissioner Kern, if there's any, sort of as an illustration, I represented a client who built a couple of buildings just under 100,000 in the city of New Haven, and high bay, same kind of thing. And one of the tenants is a single tenant in the building, and they're like a building supplier company, and they're a national company, and they have their asphalt shingles on top of roofs, or like the siding. And they bring these to these kind of buildings, and then they bring them out to various construction sites. So it's that type of user, I'm not saying that's necessarily the tenant, but that's sort of the kind of users that are looking in that range, it seems.
Well, I've just seen buildings, and we talk about how many vacant buildings are in this town, that the property owner or the building owner doesn't know what's going on, and when the tenant leaves, he leaves all his garbage behind or whatever, or the neighbor builds, and then has a landslide, a mud come down and almost bury the front property owner. So I just want to make sure that there is somebody that's going to be responsible for what's going on up there as far as, because you're not telling me who's going to rent it. If you told me it was going to be GE or somebody like that, I'd understand. You say, okay, well, they're going to be responsible for their cleaning. But right here in town now, I think we probably have 15 or 20 vacant, three and 400,000 square foot spaces that aren't maintained because they're dormant. So that's...
I think Dave sort of explained how the person will identify. But also, with this type of a development, because each phase can go on its own, it would be, you know, most likely, they would have a target tenant and then build that building. You know, because you're not building it all sort of on spec.
Okay, so it won't be built, you're saying it won't be built till you have a tenant for it?
Most likely, that's how it would be, and they would do it like when they'd have a tenant for that, for that phase.
Thank you.
Caroline?
None at this time, thank you.
All these things is really nice to hear. Are they going to have this maintenance, are they going to have a full-time employee? Who's going to be? And we've been through it so many times. And all these stormwater management ponds or retention areas, so many of them have grown up, and they got trees, they got shrubs, they lack the functionality that you were designed with them. Now, is the guy who you're going to hire, if he's going to go out there and cut in those and make sure those shrubs, their bushes don't grow? Or is the building vacant for a year, and then there's nobody on site? This stuff sprouts up. That's a pretty big issue, getting to be these retention ponds. Yes, they're needed, but they're not well-maintained all over town. I mean, it's not just this project.
Well, some of the older basins that we had, we designated some to the town, and there really was a lack of an understanding of what you require now is that explicit report, the eight pages, that defines responsibilities, and nothing was done.
Well, how about the first building you built, all the site work? How's that retention pond at the moment?
It's in great shape.
Why, you've been out there doing it?
Well, no, I haven't, but it just so happened. So we thought that possibly the commission would want to take a site walk. And the only place that you couldn't physically get into the Old Farm Road across the north was right from the parking lot, like the first 30 feet, had all grown up. So we were in there clearing a path so that you could walk. It happened to be that we were there the day that the landscaper was there. He was there weekly. He was so happy to see us because he said, "I won't have to trim all that invasive stuff that's there." But I talked to him about the detention basin is mowed regularly. It's beautiful. And of course, we designed it, and I asked him, you know, like, "Does this thing fill up?" And he goes, "Not really." Because I said, "What about the, you know, the last major, major storm that we had?" And he said, "Oh, it probably maybe got six inches to 12 inches of water in it." And obviously, it all infiltrates.
So he's maintaining where Webster Bank was, correct?
I don't know who the tenant was. I know it's Midwood's building, but I don't know who...
Well, it's the only building that's there, right? So he's maintaining that building, but the retention pond is always down on the edge of the reservoir?
No, there's a retention basin.
What about the one that you built 10 years or 20 years ago? What's the condition of that one?
Down there.
Yeah, what's the condition of that one?
That is grown up and will need to be cleaned.
Ah, grown up.
But we're not...
Like your family.
Yes. But realize, we're not using it as a detention basin. It was proposed as a detention basin. We're detaining our water in our underground system. That's just an area that we're discharging through.
Well, your maps show you got a little activity blue in that half circle there.
Just to show you that, yeah, there's a detention basin there that will get water in it. But we're not utilizing it for accomplishing zero increase in runoff. We're not utilizing it for detention, we're using it for water quality.
The basin was built in compliance with our requirements to do our activities within the wetlands from our previous application some 15, 20 years ago. Nothing was done as far as development on the property, as far as, and the property has remained a farm field, and the area where the basin is has overgrown, will need to be cut back and brought back to the condition that we intended it to be.
Aaron, you got any comments?
Yes, my environmental planish report went out to you in the packet, which was the night before Thanksgiving. There's a lot of information that has been requested that's outstanding. I haven't received anything back, although it's only been less than a week. There's a lot of information missing from the wetlands report. And I have then, from what's technically missing, so I can do a detailed review. Once I have the completed application, I do what I call my deep dive. And, but at this point, I, as per the report, I am asking, I'm suggesting that it is being declared a significant impact activity. If for nothing else, they are creating 18 acres of impervious or semi-impervious area. So under that regulation, this is a significant impact. They said there's 43, and the application form says 47 acres, but whatever, the real number is, there is, you know, 18. What percent of 43 is that? So, and it's a lot of surface area. So what do we look for when that happens, when we have a development coming in under that? We look for infiltration and replication of the natural hydrograph and infiltration of the storm flows. So maybe somebody can address that, maybe if not tonight, at the next meeting, how those things are addressed by this specific design. And then, of course, the impact during construction. Mostly, my concern is on the North Farms Reservoir, which is, I think it was George that said, or maybe it was Dave, it is a state recreational area, a lot of boating and fishing. It's very shallow, it has a lot of weeds in it, but it is amazingly popular for those two activities, boating and fishing. So it's a uterified water body today. Any more nutrients going in there from the soil particles that get through during the construction phase is a concern. And I know I've talked to the project engineers about that, and they're looking at that. But most important, I don't know if you want to proceed tonight or hear George Logan? He's here tonight to go over the wetland impact aspect.
Well, most of the impact is recharge. The bulk of the stormwater management is all recharge. That's right where we want it, isn't it?
Not, that's not my understanding.
What?
That's not my understanding. Maybe George could say what percent was anticipated to be recharge versus what percent goes into the wetlands on site and what percent goes into the wetlands at the edge of North Farms Reservoir.
Do you have any comments, George?
The underground galley system, this one happens to be, I think, five or six rows, 460 feet long, with an infiltrator row that's for water quality, one of the rows. That will take this portion of the pavement, which is basically the divide as the water flows. So you've got underground recharge with water quality management on by oil-water grit separators on the system and a discharge point back into the wetlands. The natural area below this will shed to the wetlands. In this area on Building One, this happens to be 400 feet of, again, six rows. What we're doing is recharging all the paved, most of the paved areas.
Well, do you have any calculations on how much is being recharged? She's saying it's not much is being recharged, it's going to various other places. Do you have a chart of what's going into wetlands and what's going into recharge?
I would have to get that for you. I haven't calculated exactly out. But pavement area in front of Building One is going through a galley system and is recharging before it discharges back into a storm drain system. The building goes to a surface basin that has some recharge before it discharges back into the state system so that all areas of pavement or building are either going, the pavement areas are going to recharge before discharging into a storm drain system. The roof for this building goes back as if previously the area flowed to the catch basin in the state, and we put in a significant basin in order to mitigate the water going to the state.
Let me ask you this. The first building that was built, and Mr. Carson was talking about, there's a retention pond there, correct? And that, the caretaker of the property indicates that the retention pond very seldom sees much action. Is that because of the type of soil that's the recharge? Or is there a galley system with that building also?
No.
Soils.
The soils. So the soils on this whole property, chances are very percolating, or can percolate, I guess.
They're moderately well-drained Cheshire and Yalesville sandy loam, which are coarse-grained soils. They, we, you've got 400 feet, 460 feet, 330 feet, 320 feet, all underground recharge.
Put it another way. Does the commission feel that this warrants a public hearing due to significant activity? As compared with, I don't know, a public hearing for public concern, something like that? Is this, just because there's 18 acres of impervious surface, out of how many? You got over 40?
Forty-seven point seven.
Forty-seven, so what's the percentage of impervious surface? Because it could be even greater, or less percentage. Let me stand. Other applications could have a higher percentage of impervious surface on the site just because this has this number.
I don't think that's relevant. Think about what you just said. What if it was a quarter acre parcel? Apply your rule. It's irrelevant. It's not the percentage, it's the volume that makes a difference. Percentages are irrelevant. Volume is what you have to be concerned with, two completely different things with regard to that. I just have something that really flips me out with what's happening. It's generally the practice to take roof water, put it into galleys. Reason, it's clean. Road waters are definitely not clean. They take the traffic, they take the dripping oil, they take anything that lands on them. That water is not clean. We, I don't think this commission has ever allowed road materials to be put into galleys, have we? Rooftops, yes, roads we want...
I kind of think so, Jim.
Really?
Yeah, and then there's an outlet into an oil-water separator. Definitely roofs, there's no question.
Oh, yeah, because the rationale is roof water is clean. You do not want to put into the ground immediately dirty water without surface filtration of some type. Usually, we have it go through swales, so we do all kinds of things to manage road runoff because we want to take out of it as much as possible before it goes into infiltration. It's on the surface, it gets filtered right there before entering the groundwater system. So I just think it's quite contrary to what I have, what I remember as historically being done for those specific reasons with what we do with roof water versus road water.
Well, I know, I think Chipole's down there, we had created, their infiltration was between the parking lot where the islands were. So they came in and they were a direct recharge to the ground.
Right.
Chipole's, and BKE, their water didn't go anywhere. All the ground, all their parking lot water went direct. It didn't hit a brook, so that we didn't even have jurisdiction over that one.
And the other thing I just want to add in conclusion to that is the... I just find it disturbing for groundwater to be affected that way. That's not the point I wanted to make, but I'll let that go for now.
But do you see this as a significant activity, public hearing?
Well, it is a huge volume, and that is a concern. And significant activity, I don't see any elevation changes there. If it had elevation, I'd be rattled by this volume. And it is a large volume, but there's no elevation, significant elevation changes here, so...
Creative flow.
That doesn't rattle me at all. The last thing I wanted to mention, in terms of all these volume concerns, what about the wetland? You put it in the ground, what about the wetland above that? Are you going to de-water the wetland by taking virtually all that roof? Or so much of the roof and the road? Put it underground rather than let it get into that wetland, which is right there, and its purpose is to handle water? You should use it rather than ignore it. That's all.
The, all of the underground systems do discharge back to the wetland with a surface discharge from them.
As overflow?
Yes. It's, they're meant to...
So you take your first flush and filter it immediately into the ground? That's horrible.
No, no, first flushes go through grit separators and hydrodynamic separators and all the structures, catch basins that lead to the, direct to those underground systems.
Loadables, but not solubles. Agreed?
The grit separator will take out certain 90% of solubles. That's a mandate by the state.
Wow, I'd love to see the science behind that, seriously. I mean, you put salt in the water, and you're saying that it's going to remove the salt?
Salts aren't, no, no salts on site, calcium, base, oleic acid.
Soluble, soluble means that it's dissolved in water.
Right.
And that kind of filtration, I don't think takes it out. Evaporation would.
No. First road underground is meant to take out that and then recharge, and then discharge into the wetlands. It's a combination where we'll build up in the areas of the underground galleys and then have a pipe, an underdrain, that will allow it to flow back to the wetlands. So what we've come up with is the precondition we are basically at that feeds the wetlands and the reservoir are similar numbers as the precondition, slightly less. We've reduced our runoff to the state. I understand your concept, except this property, just the way it laid out as to what we were able to get surface and into the ground kind of worked backwards from what the concept that you discussed.
Could you establish a numeric very... Could you establish a numeric variation between road and rooftop? And what would be required to separate those two items?
The, the roof, the roof runoffs run to, building one runs to a surface, building three runs to a surface, building two runs to underground.
So you're saying the rooftop goes to the surface?
Because.
And the road waters go to infiltration?
The, the roof runoff, in order to get the water back to the state system, didn't allow for it to be underground because of the elevation between the building and the, and the state highway drainage system.
So basically, it's the road runoff that goes underground?
It is, but it's filtered before it goes underground?
Yeah, okay. I wouldn't want to drink that water or be any part of that in my water system, but yeah, I hear what you're saying, I just can't believe that there's anything called science, real science, political maybe behind it, but wow, solubles? If that was so simple, why would they ever use a desalinator?
It's understood.
Jeff, comments? Mike? Debbie?
No comment.
Caroline?
Um, yes, just that I would wait to get the anticipated volume before I would do anything, because it makes me nervous. Anything near the wetlands just makes me, especially with that amount of surface area, so I would caution to maybe have that presented first before making any kind of finding on the significant activity.
George, you've got a pretty good maze going there, but the end result is all goes to the reservoir, right? The state drainage goes to the reservoir, all your undergrounds, everything runs to the reservoir.
Yes.
So how do we control and make sure that the water quality is the same going into the reservoir that's there now? I'm not saying you've got to restructure something, but.
George.
George Logan speak to that.
I can do it from here. George Logan, for the record, Dream Ecological Services, good evening, everyone.
Speak up, please.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. A couple of things, so the Connecticut D E P, in their great wisdom, in the new Stormwater Manual, two thousand and twenty-four, which is in effect for this project, decided under standard number one, that they were going to require that all roof, not roof runoff, but all pavement runoff would be infiltrated. But they want significant pre-treatment, so that's why you have the all grit separators, the hydrodynamic separators. So the water quality volume has to be infiltrated, that's standard number one. And if you can't infiltrate it, then you can use other above-ground systems that are vegetated to bring up, to bring it up to a certain water quality standards, and the three criteria, that ninety percent through suspended solids, removal on annual basis, and then fifty percent for nitrogen and sixty percent for phosphorus. So the situation here is that this is required, the water quality volume has to be infiltrated to the extent possible. The second thing you need to know is, yes, everything is, is going to the North Farms Reservoir, which is, Aaron just told you, is a eutrophic or highly eutrophic system, which means it already has, already has a lot of nitrogen, a lot of phosphorus, and I've looked at the data that the state has supported from two thousand and four, two thousand and nine, two thousand and twenty, and there was another date in between there. So that's what's been going on. The other thing you need to know is that the wetland, the central wetland, I'm not talking about at the edge of the reservoir, because those are separate wetlands, but the central wetland, which is going to be receiving the overflow from these systems, whether through shallow groundwater flow for that water that's infiltrated, or through overflow back into it, is also a, not a sensitive system as far as, you know, nutrients is concerned, it's actually a high, it's a ricanary marsh, if you will. And everyone knows that ricanary marshes are amazing for taking up nutrients, including solubles. So we have the wetland in itself, which is already what it is, it's not going to be affected doing additional polishing before the water from these overflows gets through, through our little farm road crossing there back into the North Farms Reservoir. So long story short, I am not concerned because of the fact that, of what's being proposed here from stormwater management from a water quality perspective, but also because of the nature of the wetlands that are intervening, and also the nature of the North Farms Reservoir, which is a highly eutrophic system already, and it's not going to be affected by what we're doing here, because it's, it is what it is. So if it was a mesotrophic or a ligotropic, which means low nutrient, kind of a moderate nutrient, and we were discharging directly to it from our systems, I would have a little more concern, I might want to add some bells and whistles and suspenders. But as it is, I think this is more than enough to protect the existing water quality.
So you're saying because the reservoir is already dammed, we're going to dam it again with more water? Because that's the impression I just got from your little three-minute speech about water quality. You didn't say anything about how are we going to control the quality of that water going into the reservoir?
I did. I told you that the system is compliant with the two thousand and twenty-four Stormwater Quality Manual, which standard number one tells us that we need to put that water into the ground. So when this goes to the state, they're going to be looking for that, because in each situation, we're doing more than five acres of disturbance, so there has to go to the state for the general permit, and they're going to hold these guys' feet to the fire and say, how, how have you complied with the manual? So this complies with the manual, and if it complies with the manual, it means that the water quality is being protected, just de facto. Not even talking about the sensitivity or not of the, of the resources themselves.
I, I don't agree with you, and I don't believe, if you were a fisherman, that you would want this water running into the reservoir unless you had some proof of quality. Especially that all the water is going to the reservoir, you're dumping some of it into the state, and then you're filtering the rest of it over and then out into the reservoir. So I, you already said that there's a lot of nutrients in the reservoir, well, we don't care if there's some more nutrients, it's going to go into our systems and go into the reservoir? It's okay to do that because there's already, the reservoir is already saturated with them?
That's right, has to do with what's called pollutant loading. So, give you an example, so if you have something that's, we look at it and we say it has enough salt in it, so this is a saltwater environment, and let's say that it's thirty-three parts per thousand concentration, and you add a little more salt to it, it's still a salt system, it doesn't change it. So it's the loading that's necessary, so you, there's a tremendous amount of loading already in the reservoir, and you're adding a very small, it's not going to change the character of that, of that resource, it's still going to be a highly eutrophic system.
And you're okay with that as a professional?
Yes, I am.
Nick, there are, that, what he described as the manual, the water quality manual, does require us to provide the suspended solids and the hydrocarbons to be removed at a ninety percent rate. We've got three different systems prior to it actually going back either overground, overground, or into the wetland, the large central wetland area, which acts as a filter. We've got level spreaders that come out of the building two area, building one goes through the central, building three, the parking lot goes to the central area after it's gone through an oil grit separator, infiltrator row in the galley system, which is a form of infiltration, and then it goes back to the wetland, which then flows through a very flat area in that wetland and is further filtered by the wetland. It isn't that we're not providing, we're providing three different systems, and we've got five underground, four hundred foot or three hundred foot long systems, thirty to forty feet wide, and then we've got two detention ponds. Everything is being processed and to protect the, the reservoir itself. What George said is that because of what's, activities have gone on around that reservoir, which is farming with what they put down on the ground to do their farming, has led that shallow water body to have issues. And what we're providing on every portion of pavement area is two or three different systems meant to filtrate the water before we discharge it back, and we're not discharging it back at a higher rate. The pipes coming off all those underground systems are six and eight inch pipes, they're not fifteen, eighteen inches, they were direct discharge, they're, the water coming off the property is being filtered out through a six or eight inch pipe, that's our outflow pipe to the wetlands. And we've provided the length of those underground systems to provide underground recharge to the groundwater going back to that wetland, and we've also allowed for all the water to escape because you have an underdrain as part of the system, which is the outlet pipe. So there are definitely all kinds of systems with low volume velocity impacts back to the wetlands.
And if I may, one more thing, Mr. Chairman. Under existing conditions, not too many, not too many years back, I know that agriculture has been abandoned, but even recently, there has been, recently within last decade, there has been agriculture in there, which means it moves soil particles, and the marsoil particles have ended up, the finer ones ended up in, in the lake. So I understand his concern, Mr. Hellman's concern on what happens during construction, and obviously there has to be very good controls and monitoring during the construction period, but once the site is stabilized, there's actually a potential for less amount of fines getting into the pond than under many, many years of agriculture.
Aaron, you got any comments? Additional comments?
Yes. In my environmental planners report, I bring up several issues that maybe the team here can answer, they were going to answer it later, they were fully prepared to go to another, another month, so I haven't gotten a response back to the requested omitted information, and if you.
I don't think we're going to get involved in not on every line item. If you've got questions from them, they should answer it to you.
Well, right, if you're going to go and, if you're going to table this, yes, if we're going to wrap it up tonight, then they've got, they've got a bunch of outstanding information. For instance, the, as they know, they know what they are, the temporary sediment basin is not acceptable to the D E P, and they're going to revise that, so it's in the wrong place, so that was going to be revised and handed in. George Logan was going to hand in several things missing from his report. He has beautiful photographs in his report, they're all keyed to something, but there's no key, so I don't know where these particular habitats that he photographed are located, because I need, I asked it a key for that, you know, where are they located on this forty-seven acre property?
I don't think, I mean, I'll take a consensus of the commission, whether this can be acted on tonight, but I don't, I don't think it can.
I think it's incomplete.
Well, incomplete or just questions need to be answered? Okay.
Could I ask a question of the attorney, because he might know the answer about what I haven't, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read my environmental planners report, but there is a question on the address ten thirty Barnes Road, because we've advertised it as such, but there doesn't seem to be a ten thirty on the plan or in the assessor's information, so a little confused on that.
Okay, well, it would seem best to continue this so that, again, we just got your report just before the holiday, and so the team will review it again and get, get that information to you. We do need to get the state's response as well, so that we can certainly do that before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You want to suggest? You all set? You got your, well, I was a little muffled, the ten thirty, you're going to check on that?
Yes, I'll check on that, we'll clarify that, and any of the other issues that Aaron had in her report, we'll get additional information to answer her questions, and then, and then we'll answer some of the questions that the commissioner's raised tonight. So we'd have some more clarification in terms of volume and percentages that were raised by Chairman Hellman and, and I think Chairman Kern, so we can get some answers for you all then, and we'll go to the, and we'll come to the next meeting. I don't know if, if you need to make a decision on significant tonight, or if you can do it at the next one, because that would determine on what kind of a hearing you would have.
Well, do you want to have a hearing?
Not necessarily, Mr. Chair. I'd prefer to have your meeting, which would be fine.
Well, it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman? We were, our, our goal this, here this evening was to present sufficient information with regard to our plan to hopefully have the commission agree with us that this is not a significant impact activity. We anticipated that it would be continued to the next meeting because we realized that a matter of a few days with the holiday, that we could not dot every i and cross every t with regard to responding to staff, which we certainly intend to. So our goal here is to hopefully achieve, you know, a lack of significance, but to have it, the meeting continued.
Well, the question is, is eighteen, eighteen acres of impervious surface create a significant activity? I think that's the comment that's being made, or does it?
If I may.
Wait a minute, or is it eighteen acres creates a public hearing? The question is, I don't, I want to get this thing straightened out on significant activity, because with that, it changes the complex of the hearing, as your attorney's pointed out. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay. Sort of, sort of running along with Commissioner Hellman was saying before about percentages, I, I don't know that if you really think about it, does it matter whether it was eighteen acres or a hundred and eighty acres we were proposing at an airport? The question is, do those eighteen acres have any significant adverse impact on the wetlands? Hopefully, we demonstrated tonight that not only have we basically maintained the wetlands, we've even maintained the fifty-foot buffer around the wetlands. So I would be hard-pressed from just a rational standpoint to see how some paving outside of the upland review area in and of itself creates a significant activity? Because where is the adverse impact? I, I would imagine I could design a plan with one acre of pavement if somehow I figured out how to do it very poorly and have an adverse impact on the wetlands. I don't, I don't think the, the size of it actually creates the impact.
But you do, you, this is probably one of the largest sites that we've dealt with in the last, since you were here before.
The, each of the. I agree with what he's saying, it's, it's not specifically the size that the term and significance, it's the potential. And without any significant elevation changes, the potential, in my opinion, is way down. Now, if this had significant slopes to it and you were opening up this much area, good heavens, that, that, that creates potential. And I think the significance that we look for is the potential to do damage based upon the activities, and elevation is so critical on that concern, at least from my opinion.
Well, I think potential is one of the factors, but it's certainly not the, the only factor.
Oh, no, not at all.
Did you have some?
Yeah, I don't want to go any further.
Well, my personal opinion is the, the activity doesn't show me significance adverse to the wetlands at this point, but the project. But the project is large. I'm not against a public hearing to make sure everybody has their input. They have, I'm sure they have a pile of stuff there, but when you say, when you pick significant activity, how are you gonna satisfy the concern of significant activity if, if it's a potential that you already have in place? That, that's my feeling. Okay? It's, it's one thing if you said, that's, that's too close to the reservoir, that's significant activity, move it. It doesn't seem to be the case here. The case is that, that yes, it's a large project. Yes, we should probably have a public hearing. But significant public hearing? I think that changes the rules. Do you have an opinion on that?
I, I agree with Mr. Chairman. I think that, that what Commissioner Hellman had indicated, that again, in the absence of severe slopes, the potential for an impact is very low. Yes, it's a lot of acreage, but again, it's a big site. And we have extensive sedimentation and stormwater management controls, you know, submitted that show that any other potential is really minimized. And, you know, Mr. Logan has talked about that. So I think, have a public hearing? I don't think it's significant.
It's very interesting, Jim's comments on the first flush. Because I think you'll find that we were probably one of the first wetlands commissions that pointed out to the water and sewer department that the first flush in the watershed area shouldn't go in, or it shouldn't go in there. It should be filtered out. It should be addressed. That's when the water and sewers direction is now a sand filter up in those areas. And I think that was created by us. And I think that, because in concept, without the oil grit separator, you're, you're just filling the, all the infiltration systems, whether they're that, they got leaves, they got trash, they got all of them. And I, I feel sorry for them because they all can't be virgin like the day they went in. There's gotta be issues with them all. So... I don't know if you wanna, I don't know what I wanna do here. I don't know whether you wanna request a public hearing. I don't know if we wanna request a public hearing. I don't know if we wanna vote on significant activity, which would drive a public hearing. What's, what's the commission's pleasure? Nick?
Well, if we vote to significant activity, then it puts everything in a whole different class. They've gotta do environmental studies, and there's a whole bunch of different things.
Right.
So I, I don't, I don't believe that this is required there. I just, there's gotta be some way to tame the stormwater from the road and the discharges that are underground, all going to the reservoir at once. Because there's no control over what Mr. Logan's saying, well, it's already contaminated. Well, you know, if something happens, it happens. Well, that, we're not here to sit in here to have something happen, happen. We, you know, if anything, that, that, they should be trying to improve the water that goes in there. And I believe, being involved in agriculture for the last twenty years, a lot of that farming issue, besides planting a little bit of corn or having a few cows, has gone away. So the nitrines that were going into that reservoir no longer go into the reservoir. And the people that have animals or do the farming out there are very aware of the watershed and what happens to, you know, what happens when these nitrates get into the watershed. So...
Debbie, or, Debbie?
Um, I don't think it, it requires significant impact.
Mike?
I agree.
Jeff?
I agree as well.
Jimmy?
Historically, there used to be horrendous fish kills in the summertime from that reservoir. And that was the farming that you described and the nitrogen levels creating algae blooms. They used to take a rowboat and row around the whole thing, dragging a bag of copper sulfate through it. And that is what controlled it. Toxic sulfur, sulfate at that level didn't kill the fish, but it took care of the algae problems. Yeah, it's, it's not the nitrogens that concern me, it's the esoteric chemicals that we now put into our environment. And they're very difficult. And I'm, I'm for anything that can minimize the introduction of those things into our environment. And the pre-treatment, I always thought, even the hydrocarbons you mentioned, they disappear in the atmosphere better than they do in the ground. Hydrocarbons, they evaporate quite readily, most of them, eventually. So I, I just find it amazing that the state would make that kind of requirement, maybe on their big projects, but I'll bet you thousand to one, they don't do it in any of the roads that they produce their water systems with across the state. They just don't. You'd see them. They don't exist. So, yeah, I, I agree with the, the, the idea of significance requires a lot of things. There's a lot of different things that can push it. And I don't see the public interest. I don't see the elevations. So I'm very skeptical about significance on this application.
Caroline?
Yes, just that I wouldn't feel comfortable saying it was not significant until I got the estimate about the volume.
Aaron?
Yes, if, if I may, there's a few things I wanna say. Significant impact trips, notification to anyone within a hundred feet. That's, I'm just bringing that out, any property owner with a hundred feet. I don't know if that's significant here. I mean, I don't know if that's substantial, makes a substantial difference in this case because we got the big property owners around it, you know, it's not a lot of folks. But that's a point you might wanna keep in mind. The other thing, I think we have, our town engineer hasn't had time to review this yet, but everyone's been talking about the post-construction water quality issues. And I, maybe you might wanna direct some questions to her specifically because she hasn't done her review yet. So you might be looking for certain answers, and if you feed them, funnel them to me or later, or whatever, we can get them to her. The other thing is, your environmental planner, that is me, hasn't seen the site yet. I've done the perimeter with my car, but I haven't walked the site yet. We are gonna, they're gonna walk it, they're gonna provide me to get into these wetland habitats, so, so I can see what we're talking about here. The other thing is, a lot of conversation has focused on the water quality post-construction. My concern is more the, during the construction phase. You know, you have silt fencing, as you guys know, it filters, the water goes through silt, silt fences. I see it all the time on the sites. It comes out coffee colored. It goes through, yes, the big stuff, the big particles are held back, but it come, doesn't come through clean. It comes through milky and so on. So all that's going into the rez, and that's, maybe they can think, what can they do a little better? Maybe flocculants is something that comes to mind on that. Also, because of what Commissioner Kern said about all the previous farming and so on, maybe we can do, have a soil testing done, meaning what is in this soil? Okay, how many nutrients and whatever? What do we have to do then? Because that's what, I know with the flocculant testing, they test the soil. What are we really dealing with here? What is, what is the thing? So that, that's another idea I had. And then the last thing I want to mention is, do you wanna do a site walk or not? I know I, I'm gonna do one, but that could be something you need to set, as you know, as a special meeting.
All right, then let's do this. Let's table this to the next meeting. You got, what's yours? You talked about, you haven't thought that this was significant, can... What's that? Can you get closer to the mic, please? You, you've discussed that you didn't think this was a significant activity. Can we determine that tonight? I... No. Because if we vote on that tonight, does that mean, what if a vote comes up that says this should be, have a public hearing? Or do you wanna get that straightened out next week? Or does the people wanna feel with more information, Caroline wants more information, to determine significant activity? There's items that are lacking, according to concern, I mean, I got... Yes, Dave?
My concern would, would be, I don't know, it's probably, probably more of a legal issue. I've, I've been in this circumstance before. And the problem, as I see it, is that we've made a presentation this evening. We are definitely prepared to address existing and future staff comments, as well as any comments from the commission, and come back next month and do it again. But if, at that point, you were, to decide that it was significant, required a public hearing, well, we would have to do all two months all over again to make it part of a public hearing record.
That's, that's right. That's exactly what happens. So that's why some...
That's why we would, I'd just prefer to know now.
Some applicant, applicants said they request the public hearing. And I don't know if the commission wants a public hearing. I get the feeling that the commission doesn't feel it's significant activity. I mean, I, I can call for a vote on that, but I don't know what that, what the next step is. You could end up with a public hearing next month. Request, I, I, you know, I, I don't know. If you think you're gonna go, maybe you don't, maybe the commission won't want your public hearing.
Maybe a hearing, you suggested, Mr. Chairman, a hearing in the public's interest, right? That this is a, a state recreational area. Maybe the general public would like a hearing on that. You know, not a significant impact hearing, a regular public interest hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if we, if we determine you wanna have a public hearing, then we could set it for next month. And that way, we're not losing another month. We just, we just go to that.
That's what could be done.
Yeah. I mean, that may be the best route, because then we're gonna run into time issues.
Based on public interest. You can't talk without using the microphone. Because I'm hard of hearing.
Me too. Based on the potential for public interest.
Yeah. So you're requesting that?
I will request it then, for the ease of the commission, and we can have that next month.
Okay. Then does the commission wanna vote on significant activity tonight? I'll entertain a motion regarding the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-four dash ten point three, one thousand, ten twenty, ten thirty, ten forty-four, and ten eighty Barnes Road, Bidwood Management Corporation, Industrial Development, be declared not a significant impact activity.
Second?
Second.
Motion made. Any discussion?
All I wanted to say is, to the attorney, that you get the public in here. You may open it up to another month or another two months with their input.
Understood.
You know, and I, it's not a high volume usage out there, and I don't think there's a lot of public interest, but, you know, you may have tree huggers coming out of the woodwork to come voice their opinion. So you sure that's the way you wanna root?
I, I think that in order to get the issues out, and what the chairman was saying, I think that's probably the best route tonight, to do that.
Motion made and seconded. Determined it's not a significant activity.
What?
I seconded.
It was seconded.
So, no.
No. You think it might be a significant activity?
No, I don't wanna, I don't want it to be.
So you're voting in favor it's not a significant activity?
Right, so it's yes?
Yes.
I understand this Phillips motion to be that it be declared not a significant impact activity. Is that correct? Correct.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Then at this time, we're going to set a public hearing based on public concern and the, the general size of the application. And that will be scheduled for the January meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman? Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, we got, we got, we got a receipt of application. Now, this is for administration approval. Now, is this receipt as of the November meeting?
Yeah. Thank you.
From Park and Rec, Tyler Mill.
I'm not caught up to yet, the new one. The new one, let me see that.
This is under new business items F.
Remember, let me check the date. Hold on a, a second if you would.
Well, it's for administration approval.
Correct. And, um, I know I have it here somewhere, but the point is, is that, yes, admin, I was going to suggest administrative approval, it shows for a kiosk. The kiosk will be put thirty feet from the stream, so it's not...
So you, you're recommending approval?
Absolutely, yes.
You're recommending approval?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll grant it. Okay, application A twenty-four eleven point two, sixty-seven Schoolhouse Road, Michael Jerace, after the fact permit.
No. Oh, the first one you already dealt with just now about the kiosk. Okay, now you're on F two?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Michael Jerace?
Yes.
That's the one up now.
Okay.
Aaron, what's going on?
Okay, um, the traces are here. All right. So I did an environmental planners report, went out in your packet, it's dated November first. And we can get into that a little bit, but then on Nov, on November twenty-fifth, the owners came in with and applied for a after-the-fact approval. So keep both things in the, in your mind. Okay, so what, when they remove, they were ordered to remove the fill, given various deadlines, but they finally did remove the fill, ninety percent of it. So this is the pictures of when I went out there on, and, like, end of, let's see what the date on the pictures is, October thirty-first, and took a look see. I had been out there earlier and requested Mr. Jerace go and pick, handpick some bricks, just, you know, one over here, ten feet over here, there's another brick, six feet over there. He did so. The contractor had gotten off most of the material, but there was some bricks that wouldn't come out, just sticking up. So he did, and did a good job of clearing that. What is left is, as you can see in the environmental planners report, what is left? It shows the house in the background with some reddish brown dirt leading, going down the slope, and then the wetlands dirt is a darker shade. The wetlands dirt is almost black, but with all the leaves on it, it looks, those are leaves, those aren't bricks, it looks more reddish. Anyway, this picture is better, gives a contrast. The second picture, between the reddish, reddish brown slope and the darker brown, wetland, reclaimed wetlands, where the material has been removed. I did let them leave, oh gosh, three tree stumps, I believe, are left there. They left the silt fence, it's still there. And them, up by, toward the house, they left a wood pile. But other than that, they got the material out, and I was pleased with that. So I said, well, okay, but you didn't remove fifteen feet of the, the last fifteen feet of the wetland. It's fifteen by a hundred, the width of their property, the property's roughly a hundred feet across. So you didn't remove fifteen by a hundred, that strip. What's this? And that's when they said, well, we wanna keep it. We wanna keep, we wanna make an appeal to the commission to keep this, this strip of wetland filled and fill up toward the house. Keep, keep that fill material there. It has no bricks. It's, looks like, at least on the surface, good dirt, good brown dirt, no bricks. And they'd like to retain that, so they, then this application was filed to retain that. So that's what's going on. I, this, another picture that was sent to you was the reclamation area in a different format, which shows the, another version of the same thing. This is photographic, this is schematic, this, for the boundaries, I use Sigrid Godwitz lines. Now, this is important to review, it's been a long time, but we had this data Connecticut's lines from, oh gosh, before the wetland commission was a commission, the eighties. And then we have, more recently, we had Sigrid Godwitz, a wetland scientist, go out there, she did a tremendous amount of work augering. She came up with another wetland line, meaning, over the years, maybe the developer colored beyond the line, and maybe prior owners prior to them colored beyond the line. So she established a line based on augering in the field, and the commission accepted that new line. And that was about two years ago, I believe. Yeah, her map dates from December two thousand... Yeah, her map dates from December two thousand twenty-two. All right, so that's what we're going, we're going with that line. We accepted her information, and what I just represented about the fifteen feet was based on her line. So the commission is, well, they can talk to you, they can present it, but they're asking to retain this fill material all across the upland review area, and then, again, fifteen feet more into the, uh, wetland area.
Is that pretty accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, any comments commissioners? Deb? Deb?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
Nope.
Deb? Jimmy?
I think they've done a remarkable job and, and effort in, in what they've done here. I think the commission has seen lots of issues, but very seldom do we get people to do as much, put as much effort into rectifying as you people have done. I think it's admirable.
Erin? That's correct, I, I don't disagree with you, Jim. My problem is, it says to the neighbor next door, or the neighbor next door, that, well, you're okay, you can leave a little bit of material in there, it's okay.
Well, if they want to go through the efforts these people did to get to where they are, grant it.
Well, all right, so there's a permit that we can act upon tonight, the after-the-fact permit?
Okay, you can act on this as an administrative approval? Oh wait, no.
No, because you're filling a wetland.
You can't, you can't do administrative if it involves wetlands. You could approve the upland review portion of it, or you could wait and approve the whole thing next in January eighth, or deny the whole thing in January eighth. They would like an administrative approval, but that would only possibly apply to the upland review area part.
Well, if you tie it to the violation, as far as the remediation of the violation, can you act upon it then?
You mean to let, to let the fill stay in the wetlands? So essentially, you're changing, what, what it would mean as a bureaucratic matter is, you'd be, you'd have to amend your cease and correct order. Because your order was to remove all the fill by September, whatever, and then it was by today, whatever. So, which, I think they did. Did you meet that December fourth, but we didn't?
Yes.
I wasn't here, I'm sorry, I don't know, did you meet that deadline, the September fourth deadline?
Yeah.
And the other-
Whatever, come on Erin, move on.
The wetland consultant went out there, okay. So they didn't actually meet that order. They met ninety percent of that order. Their, or the order was to remove all the fill from the wetlands. They removed, I don't know, ninety percent of the fill from the wetlands. What remains is this hundred-by-fifteen-foot strip. So in order to let that remain, you would have to amend the original cease and correct order, and yes, you could do that, and have it all granted tonight.
Well, I, I can't get behind this, uh, after-the-fact permit, because you're leaving material in the wetland. As much as the grade and everything else, I just can't, I just can't be in favor of it. So if you're gonna go to the cease and correct, it's, it's, it doesn't solve the problem. And we can't act upon it tonight because it's the first, uh, look at it. Is that correct? Or is this a November?
No, 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 I'm saying, as an app, I'm saying, we could pretend they never even handed in this application, and you could amend this cease and correct order.
Oh, I, I, let's, let's stick with just the after-the-fact permit, that was the question. Can it be acted upon tonight?
No, not as it is, no. Because it's got wetlands in there.
It, it can't be acted on it because why?
You, if, what, oh, you mean, can you act on it even to deny it or amend it, you're saying?
No, deny it or approve it.
You can approve it tonight because it's got wetlands in it.
That's administration. Did this come in as a November or a December application?
This came in, uh, Thanksgiving, last week.
So as a new application, you can't approve it?
Correct.
What is, what's preference with this commission, have any? Do, do they want us to change the cease and correct order? Do you want to leave this as a separate? After-the-fact permit?
I'd leave it.
Next month.
I, well, my contractor was just looking to see if he could get his machine out of there. He, he needs to move it to another job.
Oh, I thought it was gone.
No.
Then take the material out, have him take the material out, and then he can leave. And he's all set.
The problem was, he, he's removing wetland material down there as well, because the bricks had sunk in. So he made that grade to match the properties adjacent. Rather than making a larger hole into the ground, he created a grade.
Well, he, a good operator should be able to skim the top and get that back in grade. I mean, you, that fill, what do you say, Nick?
Well, the pictures don't lie, it looks like he's got ninety-nine percent of the bricks out of there. But it looks like he did haunch a little too much wetland fill.
He removed a lot of wetland material, too.
Yeah, but that's probably the only way he could have got the bricks up.
Correct, because they had sunk down into the, the wetland material.
So do you want to, what do you want to do, replace what he took out, the, the wetland soil? Or what do you, I'm not quite sure what you're talking about.
I just wanted to match the grades on the side, so the water doesn't come from the other properties and pool into my yard.
Right.
So is it better off to leave the, the material in there, that, that fifteen by a hundred?
I don't even think it's fifteen by a hundred. If you look at the map on the, uh, the blue line, right past where my shed is, it's maybe, you know, seventy-five feet by ten, fifteen feet.
And he's gonna use that material to feather everything in so the water stays off of your property?
Correct.
All right, what about the pictures there, and took it, all the stumps in a pile? Have they been gone, or they're still there?
No, they, he plans on taking those out. Some are still in the ground, but the ones on the side, he, I believe he put those in a pile. One's in the back in the yard, and, uh, Erin said it could be left there, because the machine can't get out there probably without sinking.
Well, the ground should be hard enough now, it should be able to walk out there and pick it up.
Okay.
No, I, I just assume, get this behind us and let everybody move forward. Um, I don't see any reason to ask for-
Okay, so how are you gonna, how are you gonna do that? Tonight?
Can we modify the permit to be a part of the-
Cease and desist?
Uh, cease and desist, can, can we modify that to be, this will be part of the restoration of the property?
Remediation, yeah.
Remediation for the, the violation?
You, uh, word it right? Word it, it's going to be, uh, what have we got now, Erin? We've got a cease and correct order, correct?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
In the form of a motion, is that, was that a form of a motion?
Well, I can make a motion.
Did the commission make a motion for the cease and correct order?
You did back in the day, yeah, a few years ago, yeah.
All right, so you have a motion that, now, how are you gonna modify that motion?
And by the way, I realized you do have to modify, because it said remove all, and, and now I think you're gonna let him keep the fifteen feet, so-
How are you gonna modify the motion?
Right, so, okay, so let's word it here, um, cease and correct order issued, does it, yeah, issued April twenty-fifth, twenty-two, twenty-three, um, shall be modified to remove-
Allow, allow what?
All the wetlands except fifteen feet up against the upland review area.
Okay.
All the wetland fill, filling from all the wetlands except fifteen feet from the upland review area.
Well, we, the, a, um, let's see, the commission's gonna, the issue was, the order of the, was back on, in April of twenty-three. So the, the motion's gonna read something like that, uh, we make a motion to, part of the cease and correct order will, uh, will allow the remediation to, uh, be as it exists today, to allow it to, to be as it exists today.
Remain as it exists today?
To remain.
Remain as it are be?
Allow remediation.
The, uh,
So the berm that you have there left now, you're just gonna grade down and get-
It is graded, yeah, I planned on putting a little bit of topsoil so I could grow some grass up in the upland area, and, and just leave it the way it is.
He, he is gonna take all those stumps out, though?
Yeah, he'll take the stumps out.
Okay.
Okay, let's try the motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the cease and correct order on sixty-seventh Schoolhouse Road that was issued on four twenty-five, twenty-three, be modified to allow remediation to remain as it exists today.
Is that okay, everybody? Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Do you want to say accept tree stumps and add topsoil and seed? Or whatever?
Just leave it alone, let it, let it exist today. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made, second, any other discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aye.
I'll go with it too, yes. Okay. All right.
So are we then asking him to withdraw his recent application? He doesn't need that anymore, right? Or?
No, you, he was gonna withdraw it, and you're gonna give his, give him his money back.
I'm sorry, he does need it, because the cease and correct order only pertain to wetlands. So that means he needs to keep his application so it can be, so the fill in the upland review area can be administratively approved. That's why. I'm sorry, but that's, that's why. And we can do that later, Chairman Vitale-
Oh, you strain that out with them, we're, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, application to, this, uh, Chimney Sweep Road, that's brand new tonight. So is that administration approval or not?
No.
Okay. All right. Reports and communications will, will pass at the moment. Uh, Kandraki Lane, nothing has changed, non-correct, Kandraki Lane?
Uh, no, but I, I would like to say something. Ultimately, they want their cease and correct order to be lifted.
Right.
And what we're waiting on, just to review, we're waiting on the paving of the crossing, and the, they've got raw sides embankments, which need to be, you know, dealt with. They've got one silt fence that goes down a slope like this that-
All right, so they, we gotta wait, no?
And I, I personally would like the project engineer to put his approval, to say, yes, this was great. This is the way I wanted it.
All right, uh, number two, we just took care of that. Nothing's changed with number three, uh, eight oh one North Colony. Uh, I am the Walrus, uh, Wotossic Drive, uh, we've taken, well, is that can be removed now?
Yes, I'm going to suggest it's removed, he's done a good job.
The commission recommends a removal of, uh, violation of notice to three Wotossic Drive. All right, three sixty Woodhouse Avenue, that's, uh, he's done nothing, correct?
Oh, you want to vote, I want to vote on removal of, of Wotossic Drive?
Of Wotossic Drive, what?
Yeah, to remove the, the violation notice.
Remove the violation?
Yes.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we just said, what do you, you need a motion on it?
Need a vote, yes.
Okay, make a motion.
Janice likes that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation on two Wotossic Drive be removed.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, uh, three sixty Woodhouse Avenue, any changes there?
Nope.
Okay, sixteen Windy Brook Lane, Robert SASS, activities out there, and we've got some environmental planners report.
Good evening, for the record, Robert SASS, sixteen Windy Brook Lane.
Could I have your name again?
Robert SASS, S-A-A-S.
Aye.
Um, do you have an extra copy of whatever you gave them?
I, I don't, I'm sorry, I only need seven copies.
Can you have mine, Erin?
Is it, what, is it the wetland scientist report?
Yeah, take that, there's not much in it. The, the report and, um, the assessor's pictures.
Oh.
Yes, sir. You're here because of a violation?
Yes, sir.
Erin, do you want to specify the violation?
Okay, I got an anonymous complaint, went out there October twentieth, and again on October thirtieth, and did an initial report, environmental planners report to, um, that went out, I guess it was November first, I'm trying to find it at the moment. And, um, then his notice of violation letter went out on November twenty-first. So I've taken pictures, you know, things have changed over time. I guess it all started, um, the owner got a pool permit back in July. I was on vacation for five days, and, um, it, it doesn't matter, the town planner signed off on it. And what he asked for, in other words, the, the pool company was in a hurry, they said, look, we don't have time for wetland permit. So the town planner made him move it over. Okay, you don't want a wetland permit? Okay, I'll get you out of the fifty feet out of the wetlands, and then he, then they gave him the pool permit. The pool was installed, everything's fine. Um, the original nineteen eighty-eight subdivision map shows about a third of this property's in wetlands. It doesn't affect the pool, except for the fifty feet. Of course, in eighty-eight, they didn't have, in nineteen ninety, that fifty-foot rule was put in. The fifty-foot, it used to be called a buffer, now it's upland review area. So anyway, so there's a lot of activity that's happened in the upland review area and in the wetlands on this property. I got, um, actually, a few calls on this. And, but Mr. SASS has been cooperative with, with me, and went out, I gave him verbal directions, and he got the letter, then he got the, a notice. Um, he then hired, he did hire a wetland scientist tonight. I gave you copies of the wetland scientist's report and the drawing, but, Mr. SASS doesn't know this, I don't think. Um, the scientist gave me the drawing late, late today. He emailed me the drawing, because it wasn't attached to your report, remember? So the commission has the drawing, it was handed out tonight. Um, I, I, I did get a, I did speak with the wetland scientist to ask him to send me that today. We haven't seen him, he's a name unfamiliar to us, but he would, does a lot of work, I, I checked. He does a lot of work on the shoreline and so on. So, um, I don't know if you want to set a sidewalk to get a, a more up-close impression of what's going on there. Um, the, uh, the pictures I sent out earlier in the month did show excavation. Mr. SASS had done some excavation to take out giant, two or three, two or three giant tree ball roots in the wetland. And so I said, stop, stop, and put the silt fence around, which he did. But when I went back there today, he had removed it and graded it off, which I didn't want. Um, the notice of violation letter said, don't do anything, just leave it, leave it. But it's been, been leveled off. I was just disappointed that the soil scientist, and that's why it's good I talked to him, he didn't, he, he indicated what wetlands are left, but he didn't indicate what wetlands might have been two years ago. What was the situation like two years ago? Um, he said it was very hard, over the phone, he said it was very hard to determine. He tried, but there'd been so much manipulation of the soil. He said you really need to do backhoe testing, which we have done a few times, test pits. It's a big deal, I don't know if you want to get into that, it's a lot of work. Um, so he was, his information wasn't helpful to establish the previous undisturbed wetland line. It didn't help out. It didn't help out. Um, there are... He did have tied pink flags out in the field. If you go out there, you'll see the pink flags he's tied. But they're... They don't... They don't help me. They don't help me determine where that line is.
So where do we stand right now? The... He's not followed the letter of your law or your letter? She hasn't followed exactly what she said to do? Or do you think you have?
Um, there were some things that I was... I don't wanna say I misinterpreted, or maybe I just didn't understand correctly. At one point, um, I spoke with Erin today, I went to the town hall. And, uh, she wanted in one picture, you could see like where there's, um, not like a plateau, but there's like the ledge. And she wanted silt fence around that. And I didn't realize, like, when I read the report, that's what she was talking about, that area. So I... There were some things that I, you know, I was negligent on, yes.
Well, does the commission wanna see a site investigation?
Weren't we just out there a year or so ago? We... He was in front of us for this. Erin, this is a... No?
No.
We didn't have this a year or so ago in front of us?
No. No. I don't know what one you're thinking of.
Well, it looks awful familiar.
I've never been out there before.
'Cause we let him encroach into upland review area so he could clear or do what he wanted to do. I remember the corner of the house being in the upland review area.
Well, no, it wasn't this one.
Okay. Sorry.
Well, do we wanna site investigation?
You know...
Or do you wanna let Erin work with him a little further?
I honestly think a site investigation by the commission would help to move it forward. Mr. SASS is in the middle of all this land improvement. And he's like, you know, and he wants to move forward. But I... It's hard to know what the commission would want to allow anyway. Like if he comes in with an application or something. How much is okay, how much is upland review, how much is wetland? It's very difficult to determine. Um, in other words, this four-foot mesa, plateau of soil, I thought, first thought it was all brought in. And I do have some people that claim it was brought in on trucks. But he's saying, "No, no, no, basically, it was there, I just took an old retaining wall away. And it was left. After I took out the retaining wall, this is what's left." Which, you know, I don't know, that could be true. It...
Well, if... It sounds to me like the only way we're gonna get this is with a site investigation. These site investigations have to be, what, by 4 o'clock, 3:30, 4 o'clock?
Start by 4:30.
Unless it's a Saturday morning. What's, uh... What's everybody's opinion?
Probably in the afternoon would be good for you, huh, Erin?
Pardon me?
I say probably some afternoon would be better for you, right?
Yeah, sure. It gets too dark at 5 o'clock, so any...
Is it better off Saturday morning, then?
Oh, I see what you mean. Saturday's fine, I'm around.
9 o'clock Saturday morning?
9 o'clock Saturday morning.
Is that all right, 9 o'clock Saturday morning? I don't know, I haven't got that far yet. What's the preference? This Saturday or next Saturday?
I can't go this way.
You'll have to skip that, Chris.
Well, if the majority can do the... This Saturday, I think probably get it out of the way. You may be able to hook up with Erin during the week. All right, you understand, Erin?
Okay.
If we have a site investigation this Saturday...
What time?
9 o'clock.
Uh, okay. Then that... I'm sorry, might be a problem, you need 24 hours. I'm not going... I took tomorrow off, so I need 24 hours to post this and I don't quite... If you make it later in the day, it'll be 24 hours. In other words, if I post it, you know, Friday by 11:00 or whatever, it could... You see what I mean? 24 hours to post it.
11 o'clock on Saturday? Sure, yeah.
Or is that bad? 11...
Well, it kinda shuts Saturday down.
Oh.
Why, you're taking tomorrow off, which is Thursday. You gotta get it out first, like instantly Saturday morning.
Oh, Friday.
Friday morning.
Mm-hmm.
How much does it take to get it out, seriously?
Your sister can't do it?
I'll stay and I'll do it tonight.
All right, Saturday morning at 7 o'clock, uh, 9 o'clock.
7 o'clock? Saturday at 9 o'clock.
That's nice.
Okay.
Close. Okay, we'll see you Saturday morning, 9 o'clock?
Sir, um, I'll be there. I have two young boys that play hockey. Um, so I'll just have to find arrangements for them, so...
Okay. All right?
Thank you.
We'll see you then. All right. 227 Church Street, Quinnipiac River, 38 Warehouse Point Road LLC. You guys, is that you guys? Okay. Erin, Erin has indicated that there's a violation, um, created by, I don't know, by being too close to the river, I think. Is that the violation, Erin?
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, so you're in here, you've submitted some sketching, uh, of what you wanna do with the property. And I think that said, uh, precast concrete storage.
Correct.
Correct.
It's a what?
Precast concrete storage.
Okay. Thank you.
So what's the issue here, Erin? I mean, this...
Well, it's not on the agenda as a new application because, um, it didn't come in yesterday.
But it's on as a violation. It can be dealt with as a violation.
We could... We're discussing it as a violation, yes, yes.
Yeah, so if we say the remediation is, uh, put some concrete up to, and let it be able to drain back to the river, that's the remediation.
I'm sorry, put some concrete barriers? Okay, well, let's...
This property, I go back to this property 65 years ago. Maybe se... Probably 70 years ago. And the driveway and the paving has been up to the top of the river since then.
Okay, let me just say, this came in, this application came in this today afternoon or whatever. A little surprised, John, I haven't talked to John about this. I open it up and it says millings. I thought it was gonna be dirt and grass, like just a regular old yard where you throw down stuff. It's millings now, which is surface area which trips a wire. I'm just, that's why I'm bringing it up. It's not millings today, it's proposed to be millings, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah.
What's wrong with the millings?
Nothing's wrong with it, it trips Regulation 2.1.0.2, surface, creation of surface area. It... And the other thing, part of it would be in a FEMA floodway, which is not on the drawing, he was asked to put it on the drawing when he met... We convened with the town planner two weeks ago. And, you know, the town planner is a floodway manager. He asked for the floodway, the floodway and the floodplain line to appear here, which is back.
But this was paved most of its life.
Can I interrupt for a second? When we met, is this me, can you hear me? We met with Kevin. He said this was not an issue to him.
When you went with me or another time?
I met with both of you in the same room.
Oh, no, he said this'll be okay, you need to just push it back out of the floodway and floodplain.
That's not what he said.
And he didn't know it'd be paved, that's a new wrinkle.
It's not paved.
It's not paved, it's millings. I'm not concerned about the floodways much as I am the green belt. Is he allowed to put product up to the riverbank with the green belt?
The green belt's only 50 feet, Kevin, I'm sorry, 25 feet, Kevin said, from...
On one side or the other, because if you go across the river from his neighbors there, they're right on the edge of the river. So where does this, uh, green belt thing start, or where does it end? Because if the neighbors can go right up to the edge of the river, why can't he store concrete product to the edge of the river? You've got me lost there. And if you check on, uh, millings, they're impervious, that's an impervious fill.
Impervious. The water can drain through them.
Right, water can drain through it because Walco products had a problem down there and I had to remove the soils and they were impervious. The millings were called impervious soils.
Just, it's just our regulation. Even processed stone is considered a surfaced area. So millings, processed stone, it's all considered, um, surfaced area. So if you're creating over X amount of square feet of surface area, it trips a regulated activity. It just is, I'm sorry, it is.
Would you rather have the millings there, or would you rather have them dragging the mud and the crap from the... That's out there now, up on the road? Because it's a state road where there's a lot of traffic there. Not only the mud, but I'm talking about the dust and the...
Personally, it can be millings as long as he meets whatever's required by the FEMA to stay X amount. You know, you can't deposit stuff in a floodway, period, period, end of conversation. So I... He's not allowed to deposit anything within the floodway of the river. Anything.
All right, so you're talking two or three inches of millings cannot be placed in the floodway?
That, you'd have to talk to the town planner about what the... What is allowed and not allowed. If it's millings too, I wonder about drainage, how, where's... I don't know, this isn't a real plan, I don't know. Is there gonna be catch basins, or how does the water flow off the site into the river?
The same way it's been doing for the last thousand years.
To the river?
Correct.
There's no dry wells around there, anything?
No.
Okay. Um, so, I don't know, maybe we should consider some kind of, uh, water quality thing as it goes off into the river?
Well, the product he's gonna put in there is not gonna bring any contamination to the river as compared to other things. The concrete's gonna be there and that'll be it?
Yeah, it's just...
Probably more pollution-free than anything else that could be there.
I think it'd be cleaner than what's been there for the last 67... You used... Erin, you came out there and saw what was there, what we cleaned up, the paint cans and the crap, the stuff that could have gone into the river, right? It's gonna be the typical use like we've done forever, kind of things are fairly clean use. I'm still unclear what the violation was.
Oh, you need... Any activity within 50 feet of the river needs a permit?
I got a permit.
Well, not from us, you didn't...
I got a permit from the town, from the building department, to do the demolition cleanup.
Okay.
I didn't remove any trees within the 50-foot review zone. I never got a letter, I never got anything from you saying, "Why does a violation?" You gave me a verbal cease and desist based upon what, I don't know. I'm not sure if you know.
You mean, when I talked to the gentleman on the machine?
What is the violation?
Okay, anybody that does any activity within 50 feet of a river needs a wetland permit.
I got a permit.
Not from... Needs a wetland permit, not a building permit, a wetland permit.
It went through all the departments. That's why I'm confused of this whole thing. It's the same use it's been forever, it's been storing construction materials, outside storage, heavy construction use.
Okay, so I was glad you put up the silt fence, that's good. I requested a silt fence go up and you put it up, so that's great. And now we're here discussing future use. What are you gonna do in the future?
When we talked, you said you wanted, you said, your words were, "Just draw something, put it on a napkin so I know what you're intending to do." Okay. Which, the plan I gave you is a very, not a very detailed plan, but you just wanted intent of the use. So my suggestion was, I'll put barrier up, I don't want anything going into the river either. I don't want anything dumb happening. But that'd be a good deterrent for... I don't know, just ought to be a gesture of goodwill so nothing could be...
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry. I don't know, I'm confused with this whole thing, that's why I'm...
I guess I sort of put it on the agenda as a favor because if, if, it wouldn't be on the agenda, you wouldn't be here tonight.
I don't know why I'm here tonight.
Okay. Uh, yeah. To discuss how we move forward with this, 'cause you want this approved, right? Your application, you want it approved, so...
What do we have to do to approve it, Erin? Do we give him permission to go ahead and do what he wants to do?
I asked Janice, "We can't receive this tonight, it came in too late, it had to come in by 5 o'clock." So we have to receive this, this will be received at January 8th meeting. Um, I could ask for a legal opinion if it maybe doesn't even need a permit. Although I'm confused, 'cause I think anything where you pave needs a permit, under the regulation, the regulatory activity.
He's not paving it, he's gonna put down millings, which is the ground-up asphalt. It's the same thing as stone or dirt.
Install a semi-impervious or impervious surface. I'm sorry, but it needs a wetland permit.
But it's already got impervious surface there. The driveway, yeah, Erin, the driveway going down to Kenicki's house is paved.
And a lot of the structures have been since removed, there was, I'd say it's probably 50, 60% was true impervious.
Let alone the buildings that were there. The garages out back, the paving. I mean, that's why, I mean, if you pulled the tape and you got 50 feet from the vertical shaft of the... Vertical of the river, you might surprise how close to the top of the bank you are.
I went out there today, it's, the 15-foot, it's actually pretty close, but it's, yeah. But there was stuff stored way closer in that previous history, so I thought...
So what words of wisdom do we give him to go away here with tonight, Erin?
I think for starters, he's gotta comply with whatever Kevin Puccini, our town planner, wants for the floodway and the floodplain of the Quinnipiac River.
His words were, he thought this was of no importance.
Did he say it didn't require a flood permit of any variety?
You were in the same meeting I was.
Okay, I know he said, "Please come back with a map that shows the floodway and the floodplain line on it."
He did not say that. You can go onto FEMA firm website and see where the floodway floodplain is. But I don't understand what has changed, what's done with the use or that requires a permit. I don't understand, other than houses being torn down and cleaning up a bunch of crap that was there that was gonna go into the river. I thought I was gonna get a thank you letter, not a verbal cease and desist based upon no backup. I still don't know what the violation is, you still haven't defined it.
People don't... I'm sorry, I've been here 20 years, we don't let people clear within 20 feet of a river, do all sorts of...
Erin, I went to the town of Wallingford, I went to the building department, it took four months to get the demolition permit. It went through the fire department, it went through every inspection agency here. Because there's no connectivity between you and the building department, that's not my issue. I did it the correct way. We're going back, using it the way it was, you come out saying it's a violation. Now, if we're building, if we're building and disturbing wetlands, I get it. But you have to understand, I still don't know what we did wrong.
He didn't do anything wrong, all she's notifying is that there's a floodway there. Elevation, I believe it's 46 or 48 is what the FEMA stamped on the trees.
Actually, what came out of this what's good is that the, um, the administration has decided that demolition, demolition permits will need to go to wetlands for sign-off to make sure they're not, it doesn't trip a wetland permit and to make sure about the setback from a river or a wetland. That didn't, that wasn't heretofore, never happened. In other words, in 20 years, it didn't become a problem.
Well, did he just, did he demolish or did he dismantle it? Because I've taken houses down in this town by dismantling. Because if the structure falls on the ground, it's considered demolition. If the structure is picked up and put in a can, it's called dismantling. So he did, if he dismantled those two houses by taking them and biting into them and putting them in a can and hauling them away, he didn't need a permit, 'cause it's called dismantling. If he demolished them and put them in a big pile and stirred them up and hauled them away that way, then he needs a permit. And he has to have a class, I think it's an A or B demolition permit, 'cause there was, they weren't above two stories high.
Um, so, heavy equipment can clear land, grade it nice and flat 12 feet from the river. The closest point was 12 feet, that's okay. Run equipment back and forth and back and forth without a permit? I don't, I don't know how this happened.
What kind of permit do you want to have?
We have a permit. We have a permit. It's not like we did this in the middle of the night.
If the commission wants to just disregard the application, why don't we disregard it? And we can take, I'll sit down with the town planner and the town attorney and figure out if this needs any kind of permits at all.
We're not disregarding it, and we're not trying to throw it out, we're asking you what he... What is he here for tonight, so we can give him guidance on what he needs to provide for now? So we can give him guidance on what he needs to provide for next month, if anything.
Yes. That's a good idea.
So give, give me guidance to what I can tell him he needs to do. Because I'm lost. Does he need to find out where the floodplain elevation is and go out there? But I don't believe the flood elevation is, can, it has any effect to it because if you go behind him, you've got the distributor place here. You've got the fire apparatus repair shop. All that stuff goes right to the river. If you drive down Industrial Road and come around.
This is a new activity, a new land use, a storage, concrete storage yard, new land use.
It's not a new land use.
I can remember going over as a kid and picking up shrubs because they had 400 shrubs lined up in rows on that piece of property. That's where Jeremiah, one of them had, it was an evergreen and shrub business. So there's nothing virgin about that property.
But the land use has not changed.
How has it not changed?
It's been outside storage, heavy construction. The guy was actually in the concrete business and he's doing exactly what we're doing. We just happen to clean up the houses and clean up the property and get all the crap off it.
He was in, Yalesville sanitation was in the septic business. He ran his septic tank business out of the first house. For, at least his, the father, the father did it from the 50s to the 60s. In the 60s to the 90s, the son did it. So there's always been concrete product in that vicinity of that property. So I don't know what we're charging to go back and, what is he going to provide us for next month?
A finished, what my idea was, and maybe I'm wrong, I'll, I'll check with other departments, but a finished plan, plan that shows the floodplain and floodway. A plan that shows access, how is he getting his trucks that deliver the product in and out? Where's that going? And for the, for the millings, how does that drain? And do we, I don't know what we need. I'll ask our town engineer. If you have millings, flat, pretty flat, going that way toward the river, do you need, I don't know, do you need something for when the heavens open up? How can we, I don't know, a trench? I don't know.
So you're looking for a site plan for them. You're looking for a site plan.
Yeah, a site plan. It, it can be pretty, it doesn't have to go to, Giuliano can be pretty rudimentary. You know, but how are we going to control that runoff? That sheet flow that's going to go that way toward the river.
The same way it's been being controlled for the last 100, 200 years that the property's been being used.
It was kind of humpy bumpy, you know, and we had grass and stuff.
It was not humpy bumpy. It was mostly all impervious. And you had a lot more roof and very impervious. It's probably more pervious now than it's ever been.
Maybe we don't need any controls whatsoever.
So why do you have him here tonight? That's what I'm trying to understand. I want you to show me or have me understand what you're trying to do so we can voice this to him, so we can come back next month and have all the information he needs to provide us. What are you looking for? A regular site plan, complete site plan?
Well, he submitted an application today, so that's, that's a start. Maybe just revise the, the drawing to show the edge of the millings. It doesn't say where the millings are going to end. So we could pick a line, a suggested line, end it 20 feet from the river, 30 feet from the river, whatever. But then the town planner will adjust that depending on his floodplain determination, his floodway determination. And, you know, so the millings can't go right up to the crest of the river. Let's keep them back a little bit and not to take down any more trees. There were a few trees taken down. Let's keep the trees.
There's no more trees here. They're gone. That lot is.
Yeah, they're gone.
There was no, there was no trees taken down in your 50-foot upwind review zone.
Maybe, I don't know. There was, there was some.
There was no trees taken down your upwind. You have to, you have to do your homework. Before you start making your accusations, you have to do your homework. I'm serious. You know, this is, you go off half-cocked and you don't do your homework. I gladly comply with every one. We've been a good citizen of this town. But you just, you go down these rabbit holes, I don't know where we're going.
So the only thing you want to see, Aaron, from him is, is a complete site plan with everything in place, how it's going to be.
Well, the limit of the millings, where the limit line is that he wants, you know, proposed, we can fiddle, you know, it might be, but.
Well, that's Kevin's decision, right? That's not your decision.
Well, no, no, no. As a use, he has an idea of where he wants his yard to end, his millings to end.
But that's, that's Kevin's purview, correct?
And then Kevin might push it one way or the other.
Is that wetlands or is that planning zoning purview? I'm asking a question.
Is the commission ready to decide how far back from the river the milling should be proposed so that the applicant can adjust his site plan to accommodate?
Well, I don't even know if you need a site plan. I mean, it's paved within, right up to where the paving is along the top of the river.
It's not paved by the river.
You don't think there's paving there, you see?
Not by the river, there's no paving.
Where the driveway was going to Kenicki's house.
Right down to the backyard where his back building was.
Right straight along the side of the river, right, right along where the trees have not been taken down.
Aaron, look at the, look at the picture I sent today.
Nicky Moreno had the same thing. Look at the pictures.
And what's, what's at the end of the property? Is G and G at the end of the property?
Yeah.
Which is, when that property, Kenicki's ends, G and G starts paved, blacktop, everything else, so.
Correct.
You're not changing the character of the neighborhood at all.
I think, honestly, I think we made it better.
Was this all cleaned up?
Yes.
That's all been cleared out?
Beautiful.
Oh, you guys haven't seen my pictures?
Oh, yes, we have.
Did we? Did I? I'm sorry. I can't remember. There's been so much activity this month. Did you, I don't think I sent on a letter because I was, I was directed not to send a violation letter. So I have, I should show you the pictures of the graded area.
I see the property as fairly level. I don't see a lot of terrain for runoff. The river, I mean, for the river to flood is going to take a lot of work for the river to get up that high on that bend.
Which we haven't seen in a long time since the lake's been.
So I, like you said, does he need a permit? If we, if we end up indicating that if you stay on the west side of the driveway, can we let him continue to go ahead or can we just move this along?
This is dirt.
Kenicki's driveway and the riverbank is probably 50 feet difference there. He's going to lose a lot of space.
Even the west side of the driveway?
Yep, the west side of the driveway was about, because I'd get flooded and Kenicki wouldn't get flooded because the water come up on the bank. Wouldn't you get close to his house and then it would flood behind Kenicki's house? But our famous contractor fixed that, so there's no more flooding there. They can open the gates into Hanover Pond and the water comes barreling down through there. There's no restriction now. So chances of any flooding there, it'd have to be a 500 or 200-year storm.
Yeah. When was the last time you think you saw water in there? I bet it's been 20 years.
Well, the good thing about this, Aaron, is if the product gets washed away, I can retrieve it as it goes by my house.
It's not going to go far.
That'll be my discount.
Does the commission feel that this is a violation?
No.
Okay, Aaron, no violation. Commission doesn't feel this is a violation?
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't write a violation letter yet.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
You didn't waste your time then.
So after that, I don't, you, you want to put millings down? I think that's you and planning and zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, we checked with planning and zoning, Jonathan, to see if there's any, he can recommend any requirements that you have to bring back for us. But I think everything you can handle in-house with them.
Will do.
All right.
So to be clear, how close to the millings does the wetland commission want this application to be without a permit? In other words, usually we regulate things within 50 feet of a river. So should he keep his millings like up to 50 feet? Or should he apply?
What has to be 50 feet from the river?
A regulated activity is anything within 50 feet of the river. So if he's going to lay down millings and Jersey barriers, that would require a permit. Within 50 feet, if he's going to stay away, then it doesn't.
Isn't that planning and zoning's decision whether or not, how far he encroaches to the riverbank? Is that your responsibility or, or planning and zoning's?
Well, let's say planning and zoning says it's 30 feet. Is that good? Do we want him, the wetland commission needs to approve it up to 30 feet from the river if planning and zoning says 30 feet is okay. If planning and zoning says 20 feet's okay, then this commission has to prove it up to 20 feet from the river.
So next month, he's going to come back with a plan that planning and zoning authorized him to go 20 feet or 15 feet to the riverbank with his product.
Yeah, and he needs a wetland permit, but yes. We have to know what the limit is. At the moment, we don't know.
Okay, that sounds, you understand that?
No, I didn't understand that at all, so.
Go see Kevin and ask Kevin what you need to put the millings down and how close to the riverbank you can put your product. And then you're going to come back to us and we're going to agree with it or we're going to alter, adjust it. And Aaron's going to give you a wetlands permit.
So we're talking at least two or three more months from now to come back here.
No, no, no. This can be January 8th.
January 8th.
They can act on it January 8th if you get in here, January. You already have your application. We just have to revise it.
All right, I'll, I'll talk to Kevin about this. But the reason we have to go in front of planning and zoning is it's more of a planning, not a wetlands issue. I get it. But what's the reason we have to go in front of planning and zoning?
You're not going in front of planning and zoning. If you've already been there, all you're going to do is Kevin to, to get him to write or tell you what your encroachment area is. If you need to be 20 feet, 40 feet or 50 feet, and ask him about the millings. You're not going to raise, you're not raising the grade up there. All you're doing is leveling off so you can put your product down.
I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, that's all.
You don't need to go to planning and zoning. You just go down and talk to Kevin and planning and zoning because that's his responsibility to decide how close and what you're going to do there. And then we come back and say yea or nay to it.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, the rest of the violations are the, the regular ones and they stay in effect. That's good. With that, if there, if nothing else.
Yeah, there is the adoption of the 2025 meeting schedule. Thank you, Kathy.
What, the schedule of the meetings?
Yes, it went out in a packet and typically we alter the August date.
It was fine.
The only one is the July-August meeting. Calendar.
Want to look at the calendar? No, I, no one desired to do that. I'd let them do that.
What do you got? On this list, you've got July 3rd.
July 2 or what?
July 2 and the next one is August 6. So.
I think August 6.
What's in the middle? Is this the 23rd in the middle? No, you gotta, you can't go that. You gotta go in the middle. You gotta get into August. At the end, you gotta be like the 30th.
You're talking July?
July, July 30th? Because you've still got another four weeks in August, four weeks, the 30th.
Oh, okay, but I'm just curious, why not earlier than the 30th? I'm just curious.
Why, why, and then what are you going to do for the August? You got four weeks, you got four weeks in July when you get to the 30th. And then you got four weeks in August until you get to September.
Wait, are you keeping the July 2nd date? No, no, they would be moving from the 2nd to the 30th.
So, so in other words, we're going to meet July 2nd, correct? And no meeting in August. The August, the August meeting, what, what, what meeting are you skipping?
It's never hap, it's just never happened before. Usually there's just one in July, around July 17th, July 20th.
And then what? And then in August?
That's how it usually is. I don't care. I'm here.
Well, that's why the 30th of July fits right in the middle of both of them.
Okay.
30th of July.
But wait, are we getting rid of July 2nd or keeping the July 2nd? I'm a little confused.
No, July 2nd is gone.
Gone, okay, all right.
You're not going to have your picnic in, in the July for us?
Okay, so it's July 30th, okay. All right, I need a motion.
Need a motion to make that change, Deb?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the schedule for next year, next year's meetings on January, we'll have January 8th. And the July and August meetings, we're, we'll skip the August meeting and we'll meet July 30th.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Before we all convene, I'm, I'm doing it right now. I'm going to go back to my office. We're doing a special meeting this Saturday at 9:00. Do you want, does anyone know, are we expecting snow? Do we want a rain date or just?
No, no, we're not expecting snow.
It's supposed to be nice. Okay, fine.
Before we go, is I'd like you.
I don't have a vote yet. Oh.
Excuse me?
Wait a minute, we haven't voted on this. Hang on just a minute. Motion made, was seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then, go ahead, Nick.
Aaron, you've made the comment before about having us talk to the engineer department. I believe it would be your task to do that because you know what you want to ask about having engineer look at the prints.
We're talking about Midwood? What are we talking about?
I'm talking about Midwood.
Yeah, Midwood, okay.
All right, you, in your, you said in your statement, you wanted us to talk to the engineer department. I believe, did you?
Well, through me, but yeah, yeah.
All right, so you're going to take, handle that with us, for us?
I can surmise what, you know, Mr. Hellman said about solubles and stuff and. She's going to do a general review. She always does, you know, very detailed. But then anything extra you want her to think about.
Well, you're going to give her the prints to review them. She'll come back to you with, with her expertise, right?
Oh, yes. She, we had a group sit down with them. She was there. We did a two-hour sit down with them already on the drainage and so on.
Okay.
She just hasn't written it up yet, yeah.
Okay, is there anything else to come before us tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second, motion made and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?